Hi, Madison. No.
Oh, I'm sure we did, yeah.
Well.
Oh, mine's on. I don't want it. Close to it.
Yeah, and, uh, and.
Don't worry.
Yeah, there's probably. I'll, I'll let them.
So it's not live stream? So it's being recorded?
Test, test. Just testing the system. Make sure that they can hear outside.
What's going on, sir? How are you? A pot of plants?
Only speak if it's homes outside, if they're, you're close to my.
I wouldn't notice that. I was gonna go back through everything and then moved everything, so. But I'm not going back through it now.
How are you, Frank? Good, yourself?
I got a plunge pool.
Really?
One of those little plunge buckets like.
I've seen, I've seen people on the internet doing the cold baths and stuff.
Yeah, but I was, uh, I've been trying to say get more and more active and I've been having like sore hamstrings and stuff. I was like, alright, I gotta do something, because I'm not gonna stop moving.
Right.
So I got a plunge barrel. It was like a, uh, it was a floor demo at, uh, Fiscatello. And so I talked the guy down to a good number. Put it in. First day I used it was yesterday.
Really? Afterwards, how was it? How long do you go in?
Uh, like ten, fifteen minutes.
Okay. Yeah, that interests me. I've, I've seen a lot of videos.
Well, I was surprised, because I thought you had to like cool it way down to like thirty-seven degrees, but it turned on online, said fifty degrees only. Which fifty degrees sounds cold, but it's not.
No, no. It's a lot better than, yeah, it's a lot better than first.
It felt so much better. Overflow room.
Kim supposed to come?
Hey, how you doing, bro? How are you?
Are we one member short?
Of a corner?
No, no, no. Should we have seven people?
Oh, you mean overall? I don't know.
Yeah.
Somebody got hit by a motorcycle down.
I ended up looping around, yeah.
You missed it?
It was just starting to back up and I ended up turning it down by the car wash. It was the only way I could get here.
I couldn't tell if anybody was okay. It looked like the ambulance was in and out already, but.
It was a motorcycle?
Yeah.
I saw people just getting out of their cars and the police had just gotten there.
Yeah.
But I didn't see that.
There was a motorcycle up on the curb anyway, and all like helmet and stuff was sitting there, but like the person wasn't there. So I think whoever it was, they took them away, because I would imagine that. There was a guy standing there, but he didn't look like he was hurting, I would think. Kind of fell just in the alley once and had like huge little burns. So the guy was traveling, I don't know.
Generally, car versus motorcycle, car runs.
Does it say anything?
Hey, Joel.
How are you?
Hi, how are you?
Alright, how are you?
How would they know? Although they.
Oh, boy. I haven't had enough time to get anything together. I grabbed everything. I even probably have another stack.
I'm a, I'm a special exception.
I brought everything just in case.
Well.
I don't under.
Play a Friday at that under last.
Yeah.
Such a cool spot.
It's always the best, but it's a cool spot.
I just wanted to ask where I. Think I grabbed them? Holy cow, I hope I did.
Cool. I'll try to get that. What time do you?
Not all that, I didn't. Grab it.
They asked us to just make sure to speak, uh, speak directly into the mic, because they've got the overflow room.
Is this one?
I don't know. Yep. Ready? Good? Sit down here?
Yeah.
Good evening, everyone. This is a meeting of the Eastern Planning Commission here in August sixth, twenty twenty-five, here in City Council chambers. And we'll start with a roll call.
Dr. Green.
Here.
Mr. Graziano.
Here.
Mr. Heilman.
Here.
Mr. Shipman. Mr. Atchison.
Here.
Ms. Wagner.
Here.
Thank you. Uh, the agenda that we have for this evening is, uh, was revised, um, on, I think on Friday was the revision.
It was Thursday or Friday, yes.
Okay. Um, special exception for a two-family, um, home on one thirty-nine forty-one Spring Garden Street. Special exception for a non-conforming, um, application twelve eleven to nineteen Washington Street. Uh, special exception for relocation of water course in a floodplain for fifteen twenty-five Wood Avenue. And we had, uh, Planning Commission deliberations, uh, on that application, which have now been continued until September third. Is there anything else?
Uh, yes, number six, twelve eleven nineteen Washington Street has requested a continuance.
Okay. Otherwise?
Everything's good.
Okay. Uh, we'll ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we have the minutes of previous meeting of July second, uh, that were distributed. Are there any additions or corrections? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Uh, we'll move now to privilege of the floor. Uh, this is an opportunity for, uh, any member of the public to speak on an, uh, um, a topic that is not on the agenda for this evening. If you'd like to do so, we'd ask you to come forward and state your name and your address, and please keep your remarks brief. I know we have a large audience here. If anybody would like to speak on something not on the agenda, you're welcome to do so. Alright, seeing none, uh, we will move on with the special exception for a two-family home on one thirty-nine, one, uh, one forty-one Spring Garden Street.
The applicant Nicholas Zaworski desires to convert a multifamily building with four dwelling units to a two-family semi-detached at thirty-nine, one forty-one Spring Garden Street. With this proposal, the applicant is reducing the number of dwelling units to two. One unit in each, will be in each building. The dwelling unit in one thirty-nine Spring Garden Street will be thirteen hundred and eleven square feet, and the dwelling unit in one forty-one Spring Garden Street will be thirteen hundred sixty-four square feet. And each dwelling unit will have two bedrooms. Currently, the buildings are vacant. The applicant indicated he purchased the property from the previous owner who, who got historic district commission approval on June fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, and received the certificate of appropriateness from City Council on June twenty-third, twenty twenty-two, for the exterior work which has been completed. The property is located in the downtown zoning district block class B, where the proposed A five two-family semi-detached use is permitted by special exception per five nine five twenty C. The zoning administrator has determined no variances are required with this application. The proposed two-family semi-detached u- use is permitted by special exception in the downtown zoning district. This proposal is located in a mainly residential area in the downtown and has a mixture of single-family and multifamily homes. This proposal is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan, objective one point three A, which priorit- prioritizes revitalization of vacant buildings throughout the city. Therefore, staff recommends that the planning commission make a recommendation to this zoning hearing board for granting the special exception request to Nicholas Zaworski for a two-family semi-detached use at one thirty-nine forty-one Spring Garden Street.
Applicants here, is there anything else you'd like to share with us?
No, just that we're, you know, redoing these two vacant units, bringing them back to their single-family use, such as two buildings next to each other. They used to be a multifamily, because it's one lot, so it was four units. Bringing it down to two units and just renovating the interior, and our intention is to rent the units.
Alright, we may have some questions?
Sure.
If you don't mind, thank you. Mr. Shipman?
There won't be an.
Uh, you, uh, Mr. Shipman, can you speak directly into that microphone? Thank you.
Uh, there is already an interior wall that splits the two units, and we're keeping that wall. Thank you.
Uh, will this be all on-street parking?
Yes.
Uh, nothing else? Mr. Atchison?
Is this planned to be a rental or a sale?
Rental.
Um, I noticed there were a couple of violations, assuming you guys are curing that?
Uh, we already did. Yeah, we, uh, backyard, the lawn was, yard was grown, forgot to have it cut. We already took care of it. I got in contact with, uh, code enforcement officer already about that.
Okay, because the signs are still up.
I'll make sure we go down and take them down.
Great idea.
Thank you for that.
Excuse me, um, what's up with the facade completion?
So, the original, the previous owner had gotten the certificate of appropriateness for the exterior, which would have been hardy board siding, which he did on the front. As you, I don't know if you've been over there, but the side still hasn't been done. Our intention is just to complete that as per what the certificate of appropriateness said with that siding, which is on the front, and just continue and finish that siding exactly with the, there was already the siding, when he sold it to us, extra siding was left over, and so we're just gonna put that up as for how the historic district commission ruled on that.
No, no further questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Wagner?
I don't have any, any questions.
Thank you.
Um, the, um, the nature of being semi-detached, um, is this, just to clarify, that means they each have their own walls?
Correct.
Right?
Yep.
Okay, but they just happen to be abutting one another?
Yep, and it's one lot, so that's why it's that designation.
Okay, and I was gonna ask about the certificate of appropriateness, but you've already addressed that, so.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Well, the. It's, it's on one lot, but it's two buildings separated by, uh. Oh. No, we're not.
Yes.
Mr. Shipman, I don't think your mic is, is on. Okay, hit it again.
Can you hear me?
No, there you go, yeah.
Yep. Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, we have a staff recommendation, um, to have the planning commission make a recommendation to the zoning hearing board for granting the special exception in this case. Um, do we have that motion or any other?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Mr. Shipman, second by Ms. Wagner. Any further discussion? Okay, uh, do the roll call. Mr. Shipman?
Yes.
Ms. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Atchison?
Yes.
Mr. Graziano?
Yes.
Mr. Heilman?
Yes.
And I will vote yes as well. Do you have our, uh, you have our recommendation? Good luck with your project. Next then is, uh, special exception for relocation of a water course in a floodplain fifteen twenty-five Wood Avenue.
The applicant, Easton Wood Avenue Proco Propco LLC, desires to relocate, relocate an existing tributary that will daylight into the Bushkill Creek, a retention basin, and a forty-foot wide access road in association with the proposed warehouse project at fifteen twenty-five Wood Avenue. Since portions of the proposed water course relocation, retention basin, and road are within the floodplain, a special exception is required per two nine eight thirteen A two and two nine eight thirteen A six. The Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection approved the applicant's NPDE, NPDES permit application on April fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, and this permit is valid through April fourteenth, twenty thirty. The Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection also approved the applicant's joint permit application for a Pennsylvania water obstruction and encroachment application, and a U.S. Army Corps of Engineers Section four oh four permit application on April fifteenth to twenty twenty-five. This joint permit is in effect through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-nine, and grants the applicants, the applicant, Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection's approval and consent to construct and maintain the following water obstructions and encroachments in the locations, and according to the specifications detailed in Easton Wood Avenue Propco's final submission provided to the Department of Environmental Protection on February fifth, twenty twenty-five. A fill with point zero six four acres of P E M P F O wetlands for the purpose of constructing a forty-foot wide paved road to access the proposed mil- uh, one million six hundred and eighty, eighty-eight square foot industrial building. The channel changed within the eight hundred and seventy-foot segment of the U N T of the Bushkill Creek, consisting of the relocation of the existing stream and the construction of a fifteen hundred thirty-two foot long, eight foot wide, one point one foot deep trapezoidal canal having two point five to one, to one side slopes, a bed line with R three riprap, and a longitudinal slope ranging from point zero one percent to three percent. A stream crossing of the U N T to Bushkill Creek consisting of a seventy-five foot long, ninety-six inch diameter concrete culvert, concrete wing walls, and an invert depressed twelve inch below stream bed elevation. A utility line crossing of the enclosed portion of the U N T to the Bushkill Creek, consisting of a twelve inch diameter water main. A utility line crossing of the enclosed portion of the U N T to Bushkill Creek consisting of a six inch diameter gas mine, main. The utility line crossing of an enclosed portion of the U N T Bushkill Creek consisting of an eighteen inch diameter smooth line corrugated polyethylene pipe conveying stormwater. To remove the existing stream enclosure of the U N T to Bushkill Creek and to construct and maintain a replacement stream crossing consisting of a sixty-foot long, six point four foot wide, eight point one foot high, open bottom reinforced con-span arc pipe. This crossing carries an, an U N T to Bushkill Creek below S R twenty seventeen, which is Hackett Avenue. The utility line crossing of the enclosed portion of the U N T to Bushkill Creek consisting of an eighteen inch diameter smooth line corrugated polyurethane pipe conveying stormwater. The stormwater outfall within the floodway of a U N T to the Bushkill Creek consisting of a six point five foot long, eighteen inch diameter perforated level spreader. A stormwater outfall within the floodway of the U N T to Bushkill Creek consisting of a hundred and eighteen foot long, twenty-four inch diameter perforated level spreader. The zoning administrator has determined no variances required with this application. Special exception criteria: The proposed improvements will not cause overcrowding of the land but would be normally expected from the proposals. The improvements will not impair the supply of light and air to adjacent properties. These improvements will not burden the water, sewer, school, or other public facilities. The proposed improvements will not substantially change the character of the surrounding neighborhood. These improvements will not cause congestion in public streets. The proposed improvements will not create a hazard to public health and safety, and the proposed improvements are suitable for this site. The issuance of permits by the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection and the Army Corps of Engineers is sufficient to demonstrate that the applicant has complied with all the requirements of the proposed special exception improvements for this relocation of the water course, the retention basin, and access road. As these permits require a demonstration to state in federal authorities that the proposed improvements will be accomplished with minimal detrimental impact. Therefore, staff recommends that the planning commission make a recommendation to the zoning hearing board for granting the special exception request to Easton Wood Avenue Propco LLC for the relocation of the existing tributary that will daylight into the Bushkill Creek, the retention basin, and the forty-foot wide access road.
Well done. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
More, more reading here. Carl? Yep. Mark Caplan.
Nice meeting you, sir.
May I close this computer? Or is there something?
No, you could, are you putting anything up on?
No, I, in, in the packets that I've given everybody is all the plans that I really wanna refer to.
Okay.
If that's okay.
Yep.
All of the documents that I'm going to refer to and that I have duplicated.
First of all, can you introduce yourself to us?
Sure, thank you. My name is Mark Kaplan, and I represent Easton Wood Avenue Propco LLC in connection with its application for special exception approval under sections two ninety-eight thirteen A two and two ninety-eight thirteen A six of the City of Easton's floodplain management ordinance. I believe that Carl read in detail that application. I have given every member of the board and members of the staff a, um, a binder of the documents that I'm gonna refer to tonight in support of our application. We filed this application to, to obtain permission to relocate an unnamed tributary to the Bushkill Creek and certain flood control structures within an unnamed tributary to the Bushkill Creek on July eighth, twenty twenty-five. We are here this evening. We are here this evening seeking a recommendation for approval from the Planning Commission regarding the special exception application that will be held by the zoning hearing board. I want to make something as clear as I can. My presentation tonight is limited to the special exception. This is not an application regarding the review or the request for approval of the land development plan. That's scheduled, I believe, for September third. So I am going to try and keep my application and the materials that I'm going to refer to, to that issue.
I'll, uh, I'll do my best to help you.
I, I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
That's not, that's not a, a comment that I often get, but I thank you for it, Dr. Green. This is almost redundant, but I'll say it anyway. I'm sure the commission is familiar with the property and the development proposed by my client as this has been an ongoing project in this community for years. As I said in my little opening, however, our presentation tonight will be limited to our application for special exception. Just to set the tone, even though I know everybody knows it, the property is the subject of tonight's proceeding is an approximately one-hundred-and-six-acre tract known generally as fifteen twenty-five Wood Avenue in the Siri, in the City of Easton. My client, Easton Wood Avenue Propco LLC is the equitable owner of the property by virtue of an agreement of sale with the Abruzzi Trust, the legal owner of the property. Copies of the tax map for the property and the letter from Abruzzi granting my client authorization to prene, to present tonight's application to this commission and to the ZHB are included as exhibits binder, uh, exhibit A one and A two. Um, I don't think we have to spend much time. Everybody in this room knows where the property is located, and I won't take your time for that. We have also included in the binder the township's tax map. As shown on that tax map, the property is irregularly shaped parcel of land located in three municipalities. Approximately sixty-one-point-six-six acres of the property are located in the Borough of Wilson. Fifteen-point-three acres are located in Palmer, and approximately twenty-nine acres of the property are located in the City of Easton. The historical industrial operation of the property has ceased, and the property is now mostly unimproved and overgrown, and has been vacant and underused for several years. To set the tone for a minute or the location, and we'll get to a map in a minute, the property is bounded by Wood Avenue along its southern property line and by Hackett Park Recreational Facilities to the west. Wooded areas of but the property to the north, and the Bushkill Creek flows in the north-south direction upon the property's eastern boundary. And I want to, I want to direct you, yes, to the first exhibit A one, which generally describes exactly what I have just said. Pardon me?
Is that tab one?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, tab one, thank you. An unnamed tributary to the Bushkill Creek traverses the property, I believe, from west to east or from east to west through an underground tunnel near its Wood Avenue front, uh, frontage. It is the low relocation of this tributary and the associated encroachments into the tributary's floodplain for which we are seeking the special exception. Now pursuant to the Easton's zoning map, a portion of which is in your binders as exhibit A three. Three. Pursuant to the zoning map, the base zoning of the property is AR, Adaptive Reuse Zoning District, and the property is also subject to the Street Carter Overlay District. Additionally, and most important for tonight's presentation, portions of the property are located in the special flood hazard areas as classified by the flood insurance study and accompani, and accompanying flood insurance rate maps prepared by FEMA, the Federal Emergency Management Agency. A copy of the FEMA flood insurance rate map for the property is included in your binder as exhibit A four. Tab four.
Excuse me, excuse me. No, 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 we're going to let, we're going to allow, we're going to allow the applicant to make a presentation, and then we'll have an opportunity for public comment. I, I, I understand, but the presentation's being made here to the commission.
Excuse me, may, may I continue?
I understand the question. We're going to get to all the questions and comments after. We're going to allow the, we're going to allow the applicant to present.
My client is proposing to consolidate the separate parcels that comprise the property and to redevelop the consolidated lot with the Eastern Commerce Park and industrial development for warehouse uses. The proposed development i- is depicted on exhibit A five. Let me get to that, and maybe I'll ask. We're not trying to hide anything. Um, Mr. Chairman, there are three or four maps that are the most relevant. They're all in the binders. If it would, um, help things, I can have our engineer put them up on the screen.
Sure, that'd be great.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, Donald, come up here, and I'll take a two-second break while you do that.
So let's start with A five. I think that's what you want to start with, put up before. Get your screen on, John. Get your screens on, guys.
It's in really big font, too. You can really see what it says.
Mr. Chairman, I would ask that you abandon the quorum here.
Understood.
We will answer whatever questions there are afterwards, but.
I hear you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, great, Donald. Thank you. So the proposed development is depicted on the overall site plan included in your binder and now up on the screen as exhibit A five. Under tab five. Um, as you all know, only approximately seventy-two thousand square feet portion of the warehouse building is proposed to be constructed in Easton with the remaining approximately nine-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand square feet of warehouse to be located in the Borough of Wilson. There is no.
Mr. Kaplan, if I could ask you to pause for one moment, I'm having some difficulty with my monitor.
Oh, sure. Let me know.
This is going to take a while. Go ahead.
We'll get that on if you can see over here.
Yeah.
Please continue.
Sure. I think the last thing I said was there will be no improvements in Palmer. The project was approved by Wilson Borough Council on September ninth, twenty twenty-four. A copy of the conditional approval of preliminary slash final development plans for the Eastern, for the Eastern Commerce Center issued by Wilson Borough Council dated February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five is included in the binder and is marked as A dash seven L. Moving on. Although no modifications or disturbances to the Bushkill Creek will be made that would change its flow patterns, the proposed redevelopment will require the relocation of an unnamed tributary and associated encroachments into its floodplain. If we could have, uh, exhibit six so that everybody can see it. Please look at exhibit A six. This depicts the existing conditions and location of the tributary. Is the commission, does the commission understand that? If not, I'll have our engineer come up and just highlight it on the screen.
We, we have your, uh, we have your map here. We can see that.
You do have.
As the existing condition, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So that unnamed tributary extends in its current condition. Extain, it extends underground basically parallel to the property's Wood Avenue frontage for three hundred feet. Our project will relocate the, the unnamed tributary, place it above ground, and include various other improvements such as the construction of a forty-foot-wide paved access road, a culvert for crossing of the tributary, and the addition of various utility crossings including a twelve-inch water main, a gas main, multiple stormwater management pipes, stormwater management facilities, and stormwater outfalls. I'm going to ask Don to bring up.
Before you, before you do that, just a question of clarity about what you have up there. Is the portion that you're talking about relocating noted by a black line?
Well, this is, our engineer is, I think you know, Don Hawes.
Yes.
And it would be better if I let him ask.
That's fine, that's fine.
Answer that.
I'm asking whoever can, whoever is able to answer the question.
Sure.
I just want to be able to see it while we're looking at that particular exhibit.
So the portion that you're looking at for the unnamed tributary, uh, it starts kind of in that purple color?
Can you see your?
Yeah, my, my question, my question is what portion is to be relocated?
The entire portion is.
The entire.
That's purple, um, except for probably like the last forty, fifty feet where it connects to Bushkill Creek.
So it's the first portion in purple.
First portion in purple. The black line there is the underground portion where it's in a tunnel, and then the other purple portion is going to get some relocation as well.
Okay, so most of that span that you, that you see there in purple and a black line?
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to understand what we were looking at. Thank you.
So let's, let me see what I want you to bring up next. Yeah, I did seven, thank you. So the next thing that we want you to look at is A seven. And this shows how the relocation of the unnamed tributary to the creek will be effectuated. Now, it's my understanding, and Don, when I go off course, please, um, help. You're going to basically daylight this stream.
Correct.
So you're going to daylight the stream, you're going to grade in the floodplain, you're going to create a new or partially new water course area to allow this unnamed tributary to flow. I guess that's from west to east.
Correct.
Okay. So that's the essence of the application. The technical aspects of the various components of it were read, uh, in the opening, and I will get to it again when I get to the permits that have been issued. Now, while the project was proceeding through the land development review process with, um, Wilson Borough and the city, my client was seeking necessary approvals from third parties and outside agencies. Exhibits A seven A in your book to A seven L are copies of all of the permits and approvals that my client obtained for this project from outside agencies. They go from, as I said, from A to L. The approvals and the permits that are particularly relevant to this application are the following. Letter D. Pinoni Associates, Inc., Eastern Stormwater Consultant. Recommendation for approval of the Stormwater Management Plan dated January fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. Item number, or letter F. The Lehigh Valley Planning Commission Bushkill Creek Watershed Act one sixty-seven Stormwater Management Consistency Letter. Letter G. The Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, NPDES, Individual Permit for Discharges of Stormwater Associated with Construction Activities Issued by DEP on April fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. H. And maybe the most important permit with regard to this application is the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protections Water Obstruction and Encroachment Permit issued April fifteen, twenty twenty- Water Obstruction and Encroachment Permit issued April fifteen, twenty twenty five. And the last one of significance tonight is the correspondence with the Northampton County Conservation District confirming the district's approval of the Erosion and Sedimentation Control Plan. I'm gonna get into the two most significant permits in a minute, but I'd just like to editorialize a little of why I've looked at, brought to your attention, these permits. These are all of the permits that are required under Pennsylvania's multi-jurisdictional review process for stormwater management, for discharging in a stormwater facility, for creating a new stormwater facility, for allowing construction activities that will discharge into the waters of the Commonwealth. So we have talked about township or, or city reviews by the city's stormwater engineer. We've talked about the county's agency, the Northampton County Conservation District's review. We've talked about two different permits from the Department of Environmental Protection. One, which is essentially a federal permit under the Federal Clean Water Act and the State Clean Streams Act called an NPDES permit. And that is a permit that is designed and named to eliminate or minimize erosion, stormwater runoff from construction activities. We get that in every development project in the state where more than an acre is disturbed. And in my view, the ultimate permit here, and we'll get to it in a minute, is DEP, the boss over all of the waters of the Commonwealth, allowing us to go into the waters of the Commonwealth and make the modifications that we have proposed. So I just wanted to emphasize, I'm not just throwing a lot of permits at you. I'm trying to relate it to the application that is before you. Now, now, after being notified by Mr. Tillman on June twenty seventh that we need a special exception to reconfigure the floodplain, on July eighth, we filed the application with the zoning hearing board. A copy of our application for special exception that was filed on July eighth is included in the exhibit binder marked A nine. It's a very comprehensive application. I don't think we need to or have time to review that in total now. Now, I ask you to turn in the binder to exhibit G and H. Does everybody see where G and H is in, in the binder?
We don't have a G or an H. We have ten and eleven before that. I think it's the G and H before that.
Yeah, there's G and H.
Oh, in the beginning, okay.
Please look at the first page on exhibit G. This is the NPDES permit. And I'd just like to read a little of it. Under the authority of the Federal Clean Water Act and the Pennsylvania Clean Streams Act or law, the Department of Environmental Protection approves your application for a new individual NPDES permit for discharges of stormwater associated with construction activities. Your permit is enclosed. That's G. Now let's turn to the third page in H. And H is another document issued by Pennsylvania DEP. And if you read through the entire first paragraph, it talks about all of the laws under which DEP can act. And it comes down to the end, "By law vested in and imposed upon the Water Supply Commission of Pennsylvania and the Water and Power Resources Board, hereby issues this permit to my client, giving it consent." And then it's that long list of technical items that I believe Carl read before. But just to take the first one before we get into all of the nitty gritty. "To construct and maintain the following water obstructions and encroachments associated with the Eastern Commerce Park property." And then it goes from one to, let me see, nine, and it breaks down the relocation that Don has told us about. I'm not gonna spend time reading that stuff. So that's the detailed background of how we got here, what the application is, what it's limited to. And it capsulizes the application that we've made. I, I'd like to spend a couple of minutes on what I see as the law and the planning commission and the zoning hearing board's obligations in this circumstance. And if I'm repeating things that you've heard before, I apologize. We're here for a special exception. Multiple cases say that a special exception is not an exception to an ordinance, and it's not a variance. Instead, a special exception is a use to which an applicant is entitled. If the applicant proves that such use complies with the specific criteria of the particular ordinance, in this case, your floodplain ordinance. An applicant who satisfies this burden to show that we comply with the objective criteria is entitled to an approval. Is entitled to an approval unless objectors offer credible and probative evidence to prove, and listen to these words that right out of the cases, to a high degree of probability that the proposed use will have an adverse impact on the community. And here's the magic, in a way not normally expected from such a use, and that such use will create an adverse, I'm sorry, and that such adverse impact prevents, presents a hazard to the public health, safety, and welfare. Moving to your ordinance, the objective criteria applicable to the special exception for which we are seeking your recommendation are contained in Article five, Section two ninety-eight, ten, and two ninety-eight, thirteen B, and Article seven, I'm sorry, eight of the flood management ordinance. I've read through that two sections or three sections many times. Section thirteen B requires approval from the Department of Environmental Protection before any floodplain encroachments are permitted. The PADP NPDES permit and the, and the DEP Water Obstruction and Encroachment Permit are the, are the permits that are required for us to obtain from DEP. We have obtained those permits. It is my opinion, since my client has already obtained these permits and approvals, it has already demonstrated compliance with the applicable objective requirements of the floodplain management ordinance and is entitled to an approval of its special exception before the zoning hearing board unless protestants come forward. And despite all of those permits and approvals and reviews, the DEP is wrong. Your staff is wrong, your stormwater consultant is wrong. So what I'm saying from a technical point of view, by having obtained those permits, we have demonstrated our entitlement to those permits or to the special exception. Now, I'll take it one step further. To support my conclusion that by obtaining the NPDES and the obstruction permits that we are entitled to the special exception, I have included in your binder as exhibit A twelve a copy of the Commonwealth Court's decision in Williams Holding Group versus the Board of Supervisors of West Hanover Township, the two thousand and fourteen decision. We've highlighted portions of pages thirteen and fourteen, and they are particularly appropriate.
Mr. Kaplan, there is no section twelve.
It's number ten. It's number ten.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. So I'd like to, I'd like to read a small.
If you wouldn't mind, because I was so busy looking for what you were referring to, I heard nothing of what you said. Would you mind going back and repeating that, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
So what I've tried to say, sir, is that I've tried to tell you what I understand the law of special exceptions to be. Special exception is a permitted use. It's not a variance. It's a use that is permitted if the applicant can show that it has complied with, and these words are important, the objective requirements of the ordinance for that special exception. In this case, your ordinance, among other things that we've complied with, requires that we get the appropriate DEP permits. And the NPDES permit is today's overall permit where DEP looks at a whole project and basically says, where's the water going during construction? How are you gonna hold up the sediment and erosion? And then it requires something in the last five or six years, a post-construction stormwater management plan so that after it's constructed, there is a system in place to continue to manage the stormwater. So we've gotten that permit. And we would have to get that permit for any development of over an acre. So that's the general storm, that's the way the Department of Environmental Protection has essentially taken complete control over stormwater management in this state. And there's a whole long story about that, 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 believe it or not, Pennsylvania has the most impaired waters of any state in the country. So for years, federal government and EPA was after Pennsylvania to put in a significant system, and they did. But I wanna go one step further. So now, we're into the floodplain. And the floodplain is also regulated by DEP. And if you wanna go into that creek, that's the waters of the Commonwealth. And if you wanna move stuff around, if you wanna change the, you wanna, like we're doing here, take a creek that was buried in, in a hundred years ago in some industrial development and daylight it, or you wanna move it a little bit, you have to get a water obstruction and encroachment permit. And that's the permit that digs deep into, basically, our special exception. Is what we're doing permitted by the regulations, not only of your ordinance, but also of DEP's regulations and the Pennsylvania Clean Streams Act. So that's what I was trying to demonstrate by showing you these two permits. Now let's come back. So I said that we're entitled to a permit if we satisfy our burden by complying with the objective criteria. And there's other objective criteria, but here, the most obvious objective criteria is do you have the permits from DEP? We have the permits from DEP. And I say to you, and I, I hope you won't be insulted by it, the fact that the Commonwealth, Pennsylvania's Department of Environmental Protection has granted us the permit satisfies our burden of proof. So when I go to the zoning hearing board, if I really wanted to, I could put those two permits on the table and say, that's all I have, that's the only case I have to put on. And, but I won't do that because I'll do the same thing I'm here out of respect to everybody. And, but what I'm saying to you is, that's me saying to you that we've satisfied our burden. I'm gonna quote to you from a case that's very similar to this. It's not too long. It backs up what I'm saying, and in your thinking, you can take it into consideration. So this is, I'm reading from a case with a somewhat similar and a somewhat different set of facts. "The developer submitted the permit approval granted by DEP and COE as suggested by developer. Those permits require a demonstration to state in federal authorities that the proposed construction will be accomplished with minimal detrimental impact. The approval thus provided some evidence that the construction would have the least harmful impact on the protected streambed area. Furthermore, developer offered the testimony of its engineering expert, Robert Fisher, and I have Donald Hawes here, who testified regarding the process of developing the stormwater facilities plan for purposes of DEP, COE, and township review and approval. The evidence relating to DEP's and COE's review and approval and Mr. Fisher's testimony concerning..." and Mr. Fisher's testimony concerning developers' efforts to avoid an impact on one of the affected areas constitute evidence that supports the developer's assertion that the proposal would be minimally invasive and the evidence was sufficient, and here's the magic words, to satisfy developers' initial burden, and the burden then shifted to an objector to demonstrate that the construction would not be minimally invasive. Words are a little bit different, but they're the same exact thing. Do we comply with all the federal and state regulations? I think I said it, but I'll repeat it one. Therefore, it's our position that the extensive review process undertaken by my client in obtaining the approval of D E P to permit the channel location and floodplain encroachments, together with Don Haas's maps, plans, and reports, demonstrating technical compliance, are probative and credible evidence that we meet the standards of the floodplain ordinance. My final comment before I ask Don to come up here. I believe that this position is shared by Easton's planning staff as indicated in the recommendation for special exception approval issued by the staff on July twenty-nine. It was read to you before, and it's included in the exhibit binder as Exhibit A thirteen. With that-
We don't have a thirteen.
Well, then I got the number screwed again. I'm sorry. Let me see.
Number eleven.
That's eleven.
Eleven?
Eleven. Yeah, I'm sorry. It's eleven.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, we took out some exhibits at four o'clock this afternoon and didn't get the numbering right. Sorry about that. Mr. Chairman, have you heard enough? Well, maybe I, maybe I ought to have Don come up here from the engineering point of view and, and give some testimony, and we won't make this too long. So, number one, tell us who you are.
Don Haas, the landscape architect with Boja Engineering.
And, and what is your occupation?
Mr. Kaplan, I'm just going to ask that Mr. Haas be allowed to speak and tell us whatever he'd like to tell us.
No problem.
Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you. Appreciate it. We've had Mr. Haas here before. We're, we're familiar with him. Please continue.
Okay. So if we switch back to the existing conditions, you can see the existing floodplain is shown in that light blue there for that unnamed tributary. That comes directly from FEMA's mapping. As part of our study, we had to analyze the existing conditions. The purple is actually what the floodplain should be for a hundred-year flood in that area. We did a full extensive analysis, taking all the flow that would come to that point. So FEMA's floodplain was a little bit larger than it needed to be. Their mapping is generally based off of aerial imaging and is not exactly precise. You can see the widest part of it is actually where the stream is underground, and it wouldn't actually flood there. So that's part of our analysis to get the, the base down. Then when we switch over to our proposed conditions, the red is the relocated tributary. And that shows the, the extent of the, what would be the hundred-year floodplain through there for the relocated tributary. A part of daylighting this was to uplift the stream. Whenever we make an impact to a stream, D E P's criteria and the Army Corps' criteria is to take the stream and provide a benefit over what was the existing conditions there, and we have to demonstrate that as part of our analysis. So the floodplain that we modeled through there, we gave it some flat areas, was known as floodplain benching. And the blue within those areas is actually wetlands that we're proposing to be established as part of the, the stream relocation. So every two-year storm essentially will flood through those wetlands to keep them hydrated and to keep the plants and the, and the fauna in there wet as it, as it needs to be. So that was part of our uplift. We did not actually have to do that extent of wetland adding in there. It was a, a good point that we had the room to do it. We could modify the floodplain in there so that we actually lessen the burden downstream whenever there is a flood, as we know that that's happening more and more frequently. So we actually take a chance for the waters to expand on the site before they guess, go right into the Bushkill Creek. As we worked through this project, we went through multiple reviews with D E P and the Army Corps. And they both asked us like why we were doing the, the wetland benching in there and floodplain benching. I was like, essentially, we could. We had the room for it, and it provided a major uplift to the stream as well as daylighting it. When it's underground for that length of, the, the site, the fish there in the Bushkill Creek will not swim up the unnamed tributary. By daylighting it, we actually get the fish to go back up the unnamed tributary, and there's more biodiversity in the streams there. That was part of our uplift to, to make a better project when this was all said and done.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. We may have some questions. Ms. Wagner, I'll start with you.
I have a lot of questions. You, you need a joint permit application for N I P T's.
Need a what?
Joint permit application for N I P T's. Your N I P T's permit is your stormwater management during construction. And then the other application that you said, that, that's post-construction. The joint application is what goes to the Army Corps of Engineering for water obstructions.
That, that's the water obstruction and wetland encroachment permit? Is, is that's this joint permit?
You don't have a joint permit. I've been onto the website. It says individual.
Individual is the N P D S for the stormwater discharges.
But you don't have a, and it would say joint, and it would say joint. You only, it only says individual permit. On the paperwork that I'm reading here, it says individual permit.
I don't have the material that you sent.
And I got, just got onto the website, looking while I was on, and it says that it's been, um, it's under review.
Yeah, it's been-
It's in technical review stage, so we shouldn't even be here right now.
Now, that- That's not what your, that's not what your ordinance says.
I, yes, it does. That's-
Your ordinance, your ordinance says you need a permit from D E P.
It's, but it says according to federal and state guidelines, and according to federal and state guidelines, you need a joint permit application. I, I'm going to give everybody up here the special exception application requirements for the flood.
That is a joint application.
And some additional-
Ms. Wagner, are you saying we didn't submit a joint permit application?
I am saying that you did not submit a joint permit application.
We did submit a joint permit.
In here, the paperwork that you just gave me, you can look at your page in your book. It says individual permit.
Which, which tab G?
Um, I don't have, I have got ones.
Tab G is for the N P D E S permit.
Yep, it says individual, and that needs to say joint.
No, an N P D E S permit is not-
I have information to show everybody for that.
An N P D E S permit is a pen dot, is a D E P permit. It is not a federal permit. The, that's section one oh five. The section one oh two permit, the encroachment permit, is a joint permit, and we have submitted for both.
You need to, you need to have that. That's what this says. You need to have the permits. You, I just sat and listened to the whole speech about you saying that we have to have everything, and you don't have it. My Carl's letter for the memo today said joint application as well. That's what made me look it up. Carl's, you know, like on our notes.
The, the, the water obstruction permit was a joint application.
And that's why we're here, because of the water obstruction.
And D, and D-
That's why we filed for the, the joint per, permit.
And we have filed for the joint.
But it's not here today before us, so it should have been, this whole meeting should have been postponed until you have everything.
That, that is the water obstruction permit.
No, it is not. It is a construction, I do this. It, the N P D E S is a permit for stormwater management during construction.
Correct. And after construction.
And that's the, the other permit that you had, but you still need, yes.
The N P D E S is both during construction and after construction.
The B C M, P C M permit is for the after construction that you gave.
P C M's permit is part of the N P D E S permit.
Right, and it doesn't have anything to do with the joint permit. Did you file with the Army Corps of Engineering?
Yes, we filed with the Army-
And it's being, and it's under review.
Yeah.
And that's your water obstruction permit. Yes.
No, that's, that's only part of it.
It's, it's under, all right, I'm, I'm gonna move on.
Hold on, hold on. The quicker we can get through the comments and questions, quicker we can move ourselves through. So please help us. I thank you very much. We want to hear everything. Any, you want to move forward, Ms. Wagner?
Is, is this a new application? Where, like, every time that I was here before, there was only one parcel listed. And then I come to this meeting today, and now all of a sudden, there's multiple parcels. So did the original application have all the parcels on it?
No, the original applications was for the land development, the two parcels that were associated with the land development. The special exception, the creek runs through all those parcels, so I added, included it all because it was all part of the application.
It, it needs, like, uh, I guess I gotta find the section. Like, all of that needs to be before us for all of these reviews each time, because when we're looking up certain parcels, it's easy to, like, overlook stuff. If you even, like, look at their legend here, two of the lines are the same. The existing adjoining boundary line, existing easement line, they're exactly the same. How are we supposed to look at those plans up there and, and see when? You know, you can't even open it up because it's so, so many, um, it takes so long.
I'm sorry, but I don't understand what you're talking about.
I'll get there. The floodplain management, Article six flood hazard district use special exception application requirements, written request, a small-scale map showing the vicinity in which the, the proposed site is located, a plan of the entire site clearly and legibly drawn at a scale of one inch being equal to a hundred feet or less. I think those plans are like one for three thousand. North arrow scale and date, topography based, I'm going to skip over some of these. It says all lot lines, including dimensions and the size of the site expressed in areas or feet. No, like, the location of all existing streets, drives, other accessways, and other parking areas with information concerning widths. No, like, the first few times that we were here, we only looked at one parcel. We're losing driveway accesses on other parcels because things weren't listed.
The land development application-
And I didn't interrupt you. Parking uses, land code, like, the parking one here is calculated under land use code one fifty and not one fi- fifty, one five-five.
Why, why are you bringing this up?
I'm going through the special exception criteria.
Why, why are you going into one fifty versus one fifty-four? That's about traffic.
It's, this is saying, has this all been done? It's in this checklist here. Has, have we received it? Is it accurate? And I'm telling you that it, just, I'm making a comment that it's not.
You have a traffic impact study. I mean, you've got something confused. Our land development plan-
Let me finish.
No, you're, you're-
Look, let her finish.
It says the location of any existing bodies of water, watercourses, building structures, and other public or private facilities, including railroad tracks and facilities, and other natural man-made features affecting or affected by the proposed activity or development. So, the deeds say you have deed restrictions. You're not allowed to dig the soil. You're not allowed to do a lot of stuff for our health and our safety, and that's pretty scary, the stuff that I read. I don't see any of that addressed on these plans.
I don't know. I, I gotta tell you, I really can't file what you're talking about. You're just, you're, the, the, you started with, we have too many parcels. I, I, I think, I think Carl was getting at it. The land development plan-
I'll continue.
The land development plan is also a lot consolidation plan.
That wasn't, that wasn't on the application for us. That's not what we were reviewing, a lot, application.
For, that, that, that's for land development. We're not here about land development.
I'm reading a special exception application requirement for the flood hazard zone. That's what I'm reading to you.
And it applies to the flood hazard zone. It doesn't apply to a hundred acres.
This is the checklist that I'm asking, looking for.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. I'm not going to get anywhere with this.
This is the checklist.
You don't, you don't need to get, you don't need to get anywhere. Hold on, hold on. Ms. Wagner, if we can just share what you're going to share, we're going to move on. She's just sharing what she's seen.
Thank you.
Going through the list the same way that you did. It's only fair.
Not asking for a response.
It says sufficiently detailed, did we receive sufficiently detailed architectural or engineering drawings, including floor plans, sections, exterior building elevations as appropriate? No, we have not received any floor plans. I think we've gotten, um, false renderings. I don't really think that we've seen like a true, actual rendering. I'm skipping over a few of here, but this also says, um, certification that the applicant, that the site upon which the activity or development is proposed is an existing separate and single parcel? No, because you just said that this is a lot consolidation.
There are certifications in our application.
This checklist says that it needs to be for a single, separate parcel. We need a certification from a registered professional engineer, architect, landscape architect. That's the proposed construction has been adequately designed to protect against the damage of the base flood. Something needs to be written on one of the plans that say that.
And there's a separate certification that was submitted. It's in your book.
It doesn't say what, exactly what it needs to say according to the rules. I saw, I know that it says hundred, half foot over the base flood elevations, but it needs to say a few other, more specific things. You know, and, um, one of the problems with coming here before with one parcel listed and now five parcels listed, the landscaping plan only was for parcel one. And it should be included for some of the parcels that the stormwater is on right now for, under with the street quarter overlay zone. And it, and, um, it says where excavation, where any excavation or grading is proposed, plan a meeting. And it says, meeting the requirements of the D E P to implement and maintain the erosion and sedimation, sedimentation control. What amendments were you given from the North Hampton County soils conservation?
What, what? Say that again.
What amendments did you get from the North Hampton?
Amendment to what? We have an approval of our, of our erosion and sedimentation.
North Hampton County gave you, like, it's not listed on the site plan. What kind of amendments that you got that they are allowing?
I don't know what you're talking about. We have an approval. And we're here, we're here about the special exception, not the land development plan.
This is the checklist for the special exception. I printed it right off of our website. Take a pen and jot this down.
So, D E P was wrong in issuing the two permits. The township engineer was wrong in approving the stormwater management.
That's what I'm trying to do, that's what I'm trying to figure out, because it's, it's, it was a railroad tracks. There's creosote in there. It's a serpentine rock wall that has naturally known asbestos, naturally formed asbestos.
But we have-
Prior to-
We have an act to approve.
Prior to this being- Prior to this being the pigment place, this was C.K. Williams from eighteen seventy-five to eighteen fifty. Prior to the EPA, there is lead and arsenic that was made with the paint pigments there. There's no soil. We didn't, we weren't given anything, any soil testing. And then on the site plan, it says that you get to reuse soil, you're going to dig it up, and it just gets to sit there in the air. You're even listening.
You're, you're, but we're not here about, excuse me.
Uh, sir, I'm reading the checklist.
Excuse me. We're not here about the environmental condition of the property, that's regulated by DEP.
These are the checklist, I'm going on the checklist.
Can, can you, can you just do me a favor?
I, I'll try.
Step back away from the mic, step, step back away from the mic.
Sure.
When you're asked a question, we'll make sure that, that you, that you get an opportunity to respond. Thank you.
Five, six, seven, eight, and nine, like, there's, like, a lot of statements that are missing that need to be on the plans. You can take a look at it and decide what you want to do. And it says, um, "The appropriate component of the PADEP planning module." And, um, that is the sewage disposal method, it says the, the part of that question for number ten is asking for, um, information on the sewage disposal system. And if there's anything development in the flood hazard areas like Zone A, which your little unnamed, um, area is, it requires an impact, an environmental impact and, and, uh, hydro- hydrogeologic study if needed, and the engineer designed for the sewer extensions or treatment. And for land development plans with no new sewage flows.
If I may just, uh, let everybody understand, the criteria that, uh, uh, the commissioner was, uh, uh, reviewing is under Section two ninety-eight dash fourteen. I don't, I don't think we ever said exact, uh, exactly what Ms. Wagner was reading from, but she was reading from two ninety-eight fourteen.
Yep. From the ordinance. Yeah, the one that was passed down to you.
So it's, it's lacking the, the extra part for the, um, sewage.
If I may for a moment, the sewage module is approved by DEP. It's not part of this application because our sewer connection is not within the floodplain.
It's on my checklist for a special exception.
It's not part of this application because this application is specific to the relocation of the stream, the stormwater, and the road connection that is shown on the plans. A lot of the building requirements are, if you have a building, that's going to be within the floodplain. So a lot of the requirements in that checklist are just not applicable for this application because the building is not there as well.
It is, because it says in, in our ordinance, that it says the appropriate component of the PADEP planning module for land development, and then when you look up what the appropriate modules are, it says that it's a formal component, the sewage facilities planning process under Act five three seven. It specifically mentioned in Easton's floodplain ordinance as part of the special exception application requirements.
I believe that we've, um, give me one second.
It says, "It's a regulatory tool used to evaluate sewage disposal feasibility, ensure adequate wastewater treatment capacity, and prevent pollution during and after development."
We have a sewage planning module approval, it was part of our application. It, we, we have it, period. It's from DEP. We have it. Not going to argue about whether we have it or not, but we have it, and I believe it was submitted with our application. But give me a minute.
I don't know how you could have that, I'm not going to waste your time looking for it in anybody else's tonight, the site plans, if you take a look, it just says that they are proposed, there's no plans for the sewage included with, uh, with what we've received.
Well, in the application.
Plans that everybody approved simply only says that sewage disposal facilities are proposed. So the engineered requirements of that system was, is not part of your, of what you have.
And a, a, a planning module is not an engineering document, it's a planning document.
That's not true, it needs to be, it needs to be done, but it needs to be completed, but it needs certification from a professional engineer.
But, but it's not an engineering, it's not an engineering document, it's a planning document under Act two thirty-seven. Give me one more second.
You need the engineering design for sewer, sewer extensions and treatment, it isn't.
For a special exception for the floodplain?
Yes, unfortunately so, that's what it says. Alright. Um, fill. Section two ninety-eight dash twenty-six, fill. If fill is used, it shall be no steeper than one vertical to two hor- um, horizontal. Steeper slopes are submitted to and approved by the floodplain administrator, I'm not sure who that is, who is that, you?
We have that approval. And that, I, Mr. Chairman, this is not for the floodplain. This is, what she's reading is for land development.
It's actually reading directly from the floodplain regulations, so these things, these things that you're talking about may have been presented as part of the, the land use.
They were.
I understand, but that's not what we're here for tonight, and that's what she's pointing out, so. We're going to continue to point those things out, I believe.
It says, um, alteration, a relocation, but it gives like a whole list here, it's two, two ninety-eight dash twenty, and it includes fill. And most importantly, it's, it is, um, like the deeds that, you know, if we're going to be like approving, being able to cut in to everything, how, um, I'm not really happy with what some of this says, that it says, like, you need to use a vapor barrier, you're not allowed to dig. Any, anything has to go underground, are you aware of all of this?
Of course we are, we have a, we have.
Then.
Excuse me, you asked me a question. We have an Act Two approval from PennDOT under, under the Land Recycling Act, that takes care.
I looked that is, I looked all of those permits up, I can't find any of them either, I, I took screenshots of it, anybody can like, look it up right now. There, there is. You're not on any of, any of those websites.
We're not on websites, that's testimony.
This, 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 this document strictly prohibits everything that you want to do. It strictly prohibits what you want to do.
So, so your engineer and your, and, and, and your staff and the people at Penn.
No, I'll, I'll explain it to you, I'll explain it to you, I have the floor right now, you had your chance.
Wait.
On your, on your site plan, okay? You referenced these deeds, you didn't give this to PennDOT until the very last second, you don't mention any of this stuff like it's required to be. Do you think everybody's going to go and look up the requirements on these? Do you think that every, that's what everybody does? It's your responsibility to provide that.
And we submitted it and it was reviewed by the staff, excuse me.
And PennDOT approved?
And, and recommended for approval.
No.
That's what was read to you an hour ago.
Well, we'll look into that, we'll look into that, there's no way. It's a covenant, it says, it's strictly prohibited. So.
Unless you get a special exception.
"The intent of the stormwater chapter is to protect areas of floodplain necessary to contain floodwaters. B, permit only those uses in the floodplain that are compatible with preserving nature, natural conditions and stream flow. Promote the general health, welfare, and safety of the community, and just for that fact alone, we are not protecting the health, the welfare, and the safety of the community, knowing that there's creosote and special rules, you know, that a HASP plan, that's what it would be, a health and safety plan that would be on the permit, that we would be able to view tonight to know that everything was in compliance and agreement. We would be able to see the VOCs, know what you're going to do, if you're going to be able to. Your site plan says that you're going to dig up all this toxic topsoil and just stockpile it and reuse it while we all get to sit and breathe it.
No, no, it doesn't say that.
Yes, it absolutely does. I'll get to that point, I, I, I printed it out. Here's the NPDES permit. It just says, um, impairment class not improved, like, nobody's name is on here, corporate names, but it just says, um, in, individual permit. It's general contractor, this permit is only for stormwater during construction, that's what this one is for. You need to have the joint permit.
You, you, that's inaccurate, but keep going.
Yeah, um, I, I, some of my questions and concerns are, is like, without like the HASP plan, I don't understand how like the Northampton County soils and erosion, how they could give like the amendments for the soil and erosion control without a safety plan, so it just makes me feel like, like the DEP does not know what's going on, because they're not going to approve a site plan that's that could potentially harm us. Did you do any soil sampling at all?
Of course we did, we have an, we have a, a, a.
Not a geotechnical report for.
We have, we have.
For the chemicals.
We have an Act Two approval. We have a cleanup plan approved by.
Under what name? I can't find it online.
Well, I, I don't, I can't help it that you can't find it.
Well, we're here for, we are here, the, the intent says for the health and safety of everybody, and that's what I'm looking to protect.
There is a procedure under Act Two, there's a.
It's not applied, it's not approved, and it's not on any of the websites, you could have brought it.
So it's not on any of the websites, so.
And it would be on the site plan in the form of a hel- HASP, a health and safety plan.
I disagree with you, but okay.
Um, I'm going to let everybody, and it's like, there's a your soil testing logs, like, I took a picture of some of the applications for like, some of like, the, the safety part of it. Not just, you know, the soils bearing capacity part of it, but like the health part of it, like, what are we going to breathe when you dig up the air that?
Can I ask you a question? This application, this application, Ms. Wagner, has been before this planning commission for well over a year, the land development.
We, one parcel, today you're bringing all of these parcels, and if you would have been honest from the start and had all of these on here, we would have been able to look at some of this from the, from the beginning.
I, I am, I have looked at all of the plans, and we have a complete development there. Just let me finish. We, you have gone through and spent nine hours one night about this plan. It's always been known that this was a contaminated site. And, excuse me, let me finish. And this application was processed, the land development application was processed, and my understanding was.
That we would be here today with appropriate stuff, that you would show up saying that our health is fine.
No, no, we're not here, we're not here for the land development approval.
You're here, you're here for, for the, for the stormwater management, for this moving of the stuff for, in the flood zone.
No, not for the.
That's our drinking water for the encroachments, it, it is. You, you have to, in order to put that, agree to put that stormwater detention pond there, you've got to dig in areas that you're restricted to dig that greatly affects our health and well-being.
And all of the reviews that you sat through, did you, did you ever raise that before, or is this the first time that you're raising?
When I looked over.
You're, you're, uh, you're, excuse me, you're actually raising an issue about the land development plan.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
So that's not where we're at.
I, well, that's where she's.
Well, no, no, that's not. She's, she's reading from aspects that have to do with the special exception.
As far as.
I disagree, but that's where she's at.
Okay.
Alright.
Steep slope regulations, like, part of, like, the floodplain along the creek, like, there's steep slopes there.
We have an approval.
Which, what approval is that?
We have an approval from the township, I, I, I've seen it, I read it.
You have a stormwater management plan, you don't have a permit for the steep slopes.
We do.
No, you do not.
Okay.
They're not engineered, your plans strictly, your, your plans say that they're concept.
We, we, hey, you're telling me that a document that I saw approving.
Yeah, bring it up, like, I would.
That's not what we were here about tonight. We're not here about the steep slopes.
The steep slopes, we're talking about in the floodway management, we've got steep slopes in the floodway, and they're not engineered. And part of the application is to make sure that when the water comes through, that it's not going to wash out everything that you're, that you're doing.
That's exactly what DEP has approved.
We need to see if.
That's exactly what DEP.
That is not what they approved.
Sure they do.
Then you don't, that is absolutely not what they approved. They approved stormwater management during construction, which you got an amendment for, which none of us know. It's not even listed on your plans.
What, what about the PCMS, the post-construction stormwater management?
That's after construction. That's when the system's in place and somebody's going to come and check it, so.
And, and we have, and we have an approval for that, don't we?
That doesn't have anything to do with, with this part, this part is before construction, that's after. Like, that doesn't have anything to do with digging and getting all of that ready right now. So there's implications for projects having both steep slopes um, and floodplains. And there's, um, you must demonstrate site suitability, that the natural features won't be harmed or destabilized. And the other criteria is runoff and grading, that changes won't cause erosion, flooding, or sedimentation, and environmental integrity, that pollutants, noise, and vibration are controlled, and the regulatory alignment with the DEP FEMA and the USACE standards are all met. Yeah, I, and if you do have the permits, I would love to take a, you know, I would, like, just the Echo, getting on the Echo website. Um, you've got a fault line going right through the property. Based on site topog- topography, one point of interest was analyzed for the total project compliance with the township and DEP requirements. Single point of interest. It's the NCRS type two, um, permit.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask a question here?
Not, not yet, let, let Ms. Wagner finish.
Um, it also like requires like the environmental impact study and there's like really specific requirements on that, that. Um, that really should be before us today, I'm really disappointed that, knowing, you know, that it's, you're, you're asking us to prove something that is, you technically can't even do it. So like, I don't have anything further to say because based on the deed restrictions, it prohibits what we're here for. So that's all.
Thank you, Ms. Wagner.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mister, uh.
Sure.
Okay, uh, Mr. Shipman, you wanna ask, you have something on, on your mind?
Yes, there is something on my mind. You suggested to Ms. Wagner earlier that we've been looking at these documents for how many months? Why are we getting this tonight?
Well, you're getting this tonight because three weeks ago, after we had, uh, engine, township or city review saying everything was satisfied, Mr. Tillman said, oh, we found out that you should have had a special exception. So when we heard that, rather than fight about it, we immediately filed a special exception to do the work in the floodplain.
My question goes deeper than that. You knew about the, you knew about the water under the, under the site. Because it's, you talk about it earlier in the program, in your application.
You mean the thing that's in the pipe?
Yeah, well, the, the creek.
Yeah.
And now you've made it, you, you're, you're suggesting that you're making an arrangement to not only tran, you're, what you're going to do is you're going to expose the bushkill that's under your property. Am I correct?
We're going to exp, uh, to, yes, lift that part of the bushkill tributary that's been buried in a.
Why weren't we told about that right away when you knew this project was underway?
It's been, been part of the application forever.
Where was it?
Right on the plans, the plans I'm showing you tonight are part of the plans that have been reviewed, Don, I, maybe you are.
The last time I was here and presented, I, I specifically talked about the, the stream relocation as a, an environmental benefit on this project site.
What you gave us, this whole thing about the relocation just came in. What, the last thing I got concerning this was the stream rotation.
You, you're, you're right and I'm trying to explain that.
My point is that if that's as complicated as I'm suspecting it is, why didn't we hear about that a long time ago?
Okay, so let me say it again if I didn't make it clear.
But, but let me finish, you knew the building was up on a, up high, water's gonna pour down and at some point, you're gonna have to do something with it. Why didn't you, why didn't you tell us about that, about those plans, about that stress, about that problem?
Mr. Shipman, one of the things that I went through tonight was I mentioned that we have a stormwater management review letter and approval from township stormwater engineer. I'm looking for my notes so I can tell you when, but it was months and months ago, let me see if I can find it.
Let me tell you something else while you're looking for that. I've, I've been out there a number of times and every time I go in there, I see that water running deep in the ground when you just go into the, the first entry. And from the very beginning, I've been thinking, where the hell is that water coming from and what are they gonna do with it? And now tonight, I hear. Are you telling me I knew about that or should have known about that before? Who was gonna tell me about it?
I, I, Don's gotta answer that for you, but understand something. The land development plans have been through the review process. Don, your, your plans, maybe you ought to bring up your plans and, and, and show that.
Am I crazy, did, did we know about this? They were gonna take care of this water?
They did, they did present it in May.
Yes.
All right.
It, it's always been part of the application, the actual relocation, um, was, was designed as a previous project before Eastern Wood Avpropco was involved on this project. So that, that design has actually stayed that way from prior to their involvement at, at all. So it's always been on our plans from day one submission.
I, I think the concern may be that the, the drawing that we're seeing now, I don't believe we saw that as a relocation drawing and that, that maybe would have been, that may have been what's confusing.
That's fair.
It's that, that, that may be what the confusion is, I know, I recall that you spoke about it, I don't think we saw it in this fashion.
The, the two separate pieces, the existing and the proposed.
This, 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 what you're showing us right now, yeah, yeah, exactly, the, the, the before and, and after. I don't think we got that sense, that, that's what I'm hearing you say.
I certainly don't recall.
Right, we haven't seen it that way.
I don't recall it. I do remember the discussion, but I don't recall seeing the specifics as we're seeing them today.
Uh, Mr. Shipman, anything else for the moment?
No, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Etchison, we'll come back to you.
What, what drawing is that, Don?
Uh, that, that's the actual cover page for the land development application.
Okay, thanks, thanks, fellas, we're gonna move on to another comment and question. Cause we can, we have, we have copy of this as well, thank you.
My, my greatest concern on this, to a certain extent, dovetails with, with some of the things Ms. Wagner was saying, is we are here to talk about stormwater, relocation of a, a tributary, um, the exposure of a tributary and some of the plans and I, and, you know, let's put a little frosting on this, I do appreciate the wetlands, um, um, addition in terms of the things that you did. You didn't have to do that, I think it's kinda cool, if I'm being honest, however. This place is a brown site for a reason. And when we start having open air water sources that feed into recreational areas, I have great concerns on what I feel like, and maybe it's in there, cause we've got, I have two boxes of documents in my house on this project. Right, but I don't recall seeing a, and I'm gonna keep this just to the runoff portion, a, an analysis of the runoff of the soils that are expected to come down the hill, particularly with the cloud bursts we're getting these days. Are you listening to me or?
No, I'm, I'm listening.
Not so much, okay. So. I don't have a sense of comfort that the elements that are present on that hill now, running into an open source is terribly safe. I have even less comfort when we start digging around in there in order to build this mon, this, this incredibly large facility. I have zero comfort that a core sample was taken going down to, to the level of the exposed wall that you're proposing. And the only reason I bring that up is not to discuss the, the entire project, but because when you expose down a hundred and forty feet, I believe is what you said, on one side of this and seventy some on the other, what's in there? Do you take a core drills, a, a core sample that goes down to that level so you know that when it's, it's exposed, it's gonna run off smiles and sunshine and not some dangerous uranium enriched weirdness? So. Cause I don't wanna be running wrong, running along the arts trail and find my feet are glowing. So, my difficulty with this, I have two difficulties with this. One is while I appreciate the binder, I'm not crazy about it not being available to the public. I'm not crazy. I'm not crazy about us getting it now. And I'm not crazy about the idea that I'm supposed to be able to listen to your well-formed arguments and digest this and make a decision tonight because you feel entitled to it.
Folks, folks.
Let's try, we're trying to get out of here.
We're trying to get this completed.
So, but that's just, that's my problem, okay? One of the issues that I have is that part of the role of this commission is to try and watch out for the safety and wellbeing of the general public. Because I don't have a comfort level in terms of what's in the runoff that's gonna result from this project. Because I haven't had an opportunity to review all of these documents to make sure they all pass the smell test, because there have been a few documents that in my opinion don't. Because the, uh, uh, objector that you had mentioned before, uh, uh, opportunity has not been there because we just got this, right? Uh, I'm very, very concerned about the status of the special exception and wanting to try to approve it, I gotta digest this. And that's not even taking into account the elements that are included in here that's, it appears as though some of them you decided didn't need to be met. Because we were only looking at the section that you wanted to talk about tonight. Is that accurate? Because I heard you say that has to do with the building, it has nothing to do with the, with the runoff and the, and, and the stormwater.
I don't know what part you're saying, asking us is accurate, but you said a great many things. I think the one thing that, I don't know, maybe you're missing it, but DEP has something called Act Two. Brownfields legislation has been around for twenty-five years. We've cleaned up a great many contaminated sites. And when there is an NPDES permit on a contaminated site, just to take care of the things that you were worried about, do, if you have a contaminated site, do you want to infiltrate what comes off that site? Well, maybe you do, maybe you don't, but there is a coordinated effort, there's a coordinated coordination program in DEP to coordinate the cleanup of Act Two sites with an NPDES permit. This site was studied, Don has, Don has at least part of the Lang and Engineering documents from the NP, from the, um, Act Two process. And we're comfortable that we have gotten the approval and we've gone through every one of the, of the DEP processes. You can't get an NPDES permit until you've got everything. That includes sewage planning modules, it includes the cleanup plan. Don, I cut you off, t- tell this gentleman what you wanted to talk about, the, um, uh, cleanup plan.
Just in general on the cleanup plan, I tried to draw it in here in blue, um, that's where the proposed creek relocation is. And we chose that specifically because it is away from the contaminated areas that are actually identified over the existing, uh, stream area. So by moving it out of those contaminated areas, you're actually less concerned for.
You have to test the whole site, you have to take samples from the whole site.
I'll, I'll, I'll run the meeting.
La, Lang and Engineering is part of their Act Two process, did do testing across the site, I believe there used to be even monitoring wells on the site. Um, it's my understanding those were actually closed down, it's.
Did you get permits for that, they, they require?
All of that's been permitted.
When, like I couldn't find anything online.
Lang and Engineering would have handled that, so I can't give you any specific dates. It. In the last, I wanna say the last eighteen months or so.
Well, this is not a twenty-twenty-three plan.
Correct.
So it's pretty current.
Yeah, there's not anything, anything listed, so I would appreciate like having stuff, cause there's not anything, you can't find anything. Or pigments, or, um, the previous owners, you can, there's other stuff listed, you can find your, your NP, your individual permit. You can't find anything else, there's no, nothing else.
And, and if I can continue.
Sorry.
Sediment matters. Floodplains matter. During the construction of this, you're gonna have to disturb a whole lot of soil. Please don't try to convince me that's not true, right? You don't put a million square foot warehouse, it doesn't drop out of the sky, you gotta dig it up. When you dig it up, that is going to produce some runoff, it's gonna run into this wonderful, uh, daylighted tributary that you've presented us with. You may be comfortable with the approvals that you have thus far. You may be comfortable with the permitting that you have thus far. I'm not. Because sediment has to go somewhere. Right, in addition to, I'm not done, just relax, okay? In addition to the airborne particulates that are gonna occur during the course of, of construction, there, those airborne things are gonna drop somewhere, hopefully nearby, but wherever they drop, they're gonna end up getting washed into um, our recreational area. You know, again, I don't wanna run and have my feet glowing, I don't want people floating down Delaware to, to come out looking like they're glowing as well, um, this feeds directly into the Delaware, it's a brown site for a reason. I was not aware of any, uh, restrictive covenants on, uh, the deeded land. Were you guys, that's a question?
What restrictive covenant are we talking?
I'm asking, are there any restrictive covenants in terms of excavation on the site? Particularly surrounding this wonderful tributary we're talking about.
I am not aware of any. I do not get into those restrictive covenants myself.
Is there someone in the process of evaluating this that would have explored? My God, you guys have to do a title search when you buy properties.
Absolutely.
Okay, so let's.
Tell us what covenant you're talking about.
No, hang on a second, all right? I'm not here to prove to you your plan is good or bad.
I agree with that.
I am asking you a question. Are you aware of any elements, any covenants that would restrict the development of this, daylighting of this tributary?
We're not aware, we're not aware of any such covenant.
All right. So, and, or any covenants, are there any covenants, no, can't do that, that's the land development part, thing, right? So you're not aware of it as it pertains to this particular portion?
I, I'm not aware of it with regard to any part of, of the property, but I can't tell you, I have an encyclopedia, knowledge of every aspect of this property.
Oh, deed restriction's pretty basic, wouldn't you think?
Well, I, I, Canal is a pretty sophisticated national developer and I, I would assume that before they've spent all of this money, they would have gone through the title. I wouldn't be asking that question right now. If there is some covenant that Ms. Wagner is avail, aware of, show, show us what it is.
Special warranty deed.
What?
Come take a look.
What's it say? It's a special warranty.
If you, if you want, I, and I, this isn't anything I've researched, this is something that, uh, Ms. Wagner has, um, and, and I don't know if you researched it or was provided, you did a search of the tax parcel number? Okay, so, so if, if I may, I'll, I'll.
Please do, Mr. Chair.
Okay, um, there is a deed recorded on June twenty-twenty-three between, uh, Abacus Industrial Holding LLC as the grantor and a Bruzy Trust as the grantee. Um, dated, dated May three, twenty-twenty-three for the lot. And I'll, I'll tell you the lot number because having not reviewed these myself, I can't tell you, um, other than who the parties are, but the, the parcel, tax parcel number is L nine dash six dash one B.
Can we get a copy of the deed?
Well, it's at the court, it's at the courthouse, I mean.
No, I mean, if you have a copy of.
I, I don't have an extra copy, this is Ms. Wagner's copy, I mean, I've just. I, I don't have an extra copy, this is Ms. Wagner's copy, I mean, I'm just borrowing it right now.
Well, Ms. Wagner, could we get a copy of that tomorrow?
You can get your, I mean, it's, with your purchase, I mean, the Penda, everybody's asked for it, like...
It's, it's in the county records, it's...
You list it on...
It's booked, it's booked, it's just for the...
Refer to it on the...
What's the covenant?
Just, just for the, for the record that we don't have, Book twenty twenty-three dash one, page one oh nine, six two eight. And in there, there's included a provision, I'm skipping a bunch of other ones, no dirt or other surface material shall be removed from the property, grantor shall not be liable for any damage or injury resulting from the removal of dirt, et cetera. Grantee, and the grantee is, is the Abruzzi Trust, shall indemnify and hold grantor, grantor is harmless from any liability, et cetera, relating to the grantee's removal of dirt or other surface materials, and restricted covenants shall continue and run with the land. This is something between, I mean, this one, everybody should know, this is a, a private covenant between Abacus and Abruzzi. I have absolutely no idea whether, whether, uh, Abacus intends to enforce it or not, but it is, but it is a record there.
We, I, I stand corrected. Andrew told me, we were, we were aware of that, but that, but that's not a covenant that, it, it only runs in favor of the grantor. And there's an indemnification that you've just read, that if we remove dirt or move dirt, and the grantor, um, has liability that we have to indemnify them. That covenant has nothing to do...
What about the entire city of Deed then?
It's not a...
Just, just, just so you have the information, the other deed is in Book twenty twenty-one dash one, page four nine seven eight five, similar covenants, and it covers a whole slew of parcels, so, including everything that's in this development. So I, I...
What does the covenant, and Joel, what does the covenant say?
Similar, it's a similar, similar provision, so I have, I, I, I am not making any opinions as to what it is, I can only point out it's between those parties for what it's worth.
I, I have seen covenants similar to this on other projects, it's prohibiting removing dirt from the site, exporting dirt from the site, it does not prohibit moving dirt on the site. They do not want the contaminants to leave the site, so the dirt has to stay there on the site. So we are allowed to move it around per the way that was just read out. It's, it's exporting it from the site and dumping it somewhere else as prohibited.
And, and generally, those are put together to actually protect long-term liability of the, of the people who are on the land because it could follow them otherwise.
Correct.
But this still doesn't get back to my lack of comfort over, sediment goes somewhere.
So during the design process, we have one of the basins that is functioning as a stormwater basin after construction, during construction is functioning as a sediment basin. So the, the runoff from the site is to be directed to that basin where it is allowed to settle down into the basin, it has a skimmer that just takes the cleanest water off the top that gets discharged as part of the approval process from North Hampton County Conservation District. They looked specifically at how clean the water is running off the site. Anywhere that does not get into that sediment basin, we have to manage other ways. I know there's another portion of the site, we have a small, what they call sediment trap, we just couldn't get it from that elevation over to the basin, so we had to do that. Throughout the site, we also have, um, what they call silt socks, it's kind of the manufacturer name, compost filter socks. You see them on every construction site around the perimeter to stop the water and contain sediment on the site there.
So, Don, if I could jump in, Andrew was able to get a copy of the DEP approval.
You could step over to the mic.
Oh, I'm sorry. So, this is a letter addressed to my client, Easton Wood Avenue Prop Co. LLC. It's on the stationary of the Department of Environmental Protection, Environmental Cleanup and Brownfield Program, December seventeenth, twenty twenty-four. Ray, Act Two Combined Remedial Investigation Risk Assessment Cleanup Plan, former Elements Pigment Facility, and it's got a number of, uh, numbers. The Department of Environmental Protection has reviewed the September twenty-three, twenty twenty-four document entitled, quote, "Act Two Combined Remedial Investigation Risk Assessment Cleanup Plan, Former Elements Pigment Facility," for the property referenced above. The remedial investigation, risk assessment report, and cleanup plan was prepared by Lang and Engineering and Environmental Services and was submitted to DEP in accordance with the Land Cycling and Environmental Relation, uh, Remediation Standards, Act Two, and constitutes a cleanup plan as defined in Chapter Three. DEP hereby approves the remedial investigation, risk assessment report, and cleanup plan in accordance with the provisions of Act Two. So, Mr. Edgerton, what this means is that Lang and, our environmental consultant, did all of the testing that Ms. Wagner asked about, all the soil, all the subsurface, all the groundwater, did all of the testing. The testing was reviewed by DEP. DEP said, "That's enough testing, now give us your cleanup report." We then, then Lang and created a cleanup report on how this site, this Brownfield site...
We just wanna see a copy of it.
...can be redeveloped and used. And this is an approval of the cleanup plan. My guess, because I haven't seen this particular plan, but my guess is that the cleanup plan is to be implemented during the development of the property. And that's why I was alluding before, if there is a cleanup plan and an NPDES plan, those two have to be coordinated. So we have all of the approvals from DEP to clean it up, and after it's cleaned up, there is an inspection, and then, and another report must be filed with DEP by Lang and certifying that the cleanup plan was implemented in accordance with the approval. So, sir, you said you're not comfortable, that enough testing hasn't been done, we haven't done enough. I suggest to you that this, that we have done everything that this state requires in order to clean up the property, to redevelop the property, and to the extent that we need to move the floodplain around, we've done everything and we've gotten all of the reviews. And Ms. Wagner, I don't know whether you could have found this on the DEP website...
It doesn't matter.
But it sure is there.
We don't know if you're hiring local people, bringing people in, if the health and safety plan isn't on the site plan that's getting approved, somebody could go in there unknowingly, not know what the requirements are. It needs to be on the site plan.
That, well, that, what we, we, the only way, so let me finish the rest of it. So what DEP's Act Two does, it says to...
So put it with the plan.
A new, excuse me, it says to a new buyer, you're gonna buy a contaminated site. Now, before nineteen ninety-eight or nineteen ninety-nine, before this act went into effect, you couldn't, it was very difficult to clean up brownfield sites, because if you came along, you could be stuck with the liability, just like that covenant was talking about. Act Two says to somebody who comes along to develop, if you go through our process and you then implement the plan and it's certified, then you're exonerated from liability. That's the incentive to, for somebody like Skanel to do this. So, uh, contrary to what Ms. Wagner just said, it is very important to, Skanel, that when this plan... That when this plan is implemented, it is implemented in accordance with the plan, because Lang and has to go out there and certify that Skanel did exactly what was in the plan. That report then goes to DEP. And if DEP's in agreement that it was done right, then it issues a limitation of liability letter to Skanel. That's the way the act works, sir.
I, I can appreciate that. I, I, I'm gonna behave myself. I think that the... I appreciate the explanation. My, how do I say this? It is one thing to point to the letter saying you've got a permit, it's another thing to see what went into getting that permit. And unfortunately, I don't have a level of comfort that everything that's going into getting these permits is completely solid. And that's my own personal issue. I'd like to overcome that. I'm not here to beat up on you guys, I know you guys have worked really hard on this. Heck, the last time you guys were here, I said, "It's tough to do this," right? I get it. But, I gotta live here. You guys go back to Chicago or wherever, right? These people live here. Right? So, if you're gonna come in, chop a hole in the side of a brown site, right? Dig up a tributary that flows into, you know, one of our main waterways? And say, "Yeah, we got a permit back that way and it's gonna be fine," that old dog won't hunt, right? I'd like to see it.
You'd like to see what?
I'd like to see the details that are going into the Act Two piece that you're referring to. I'd like to see it. I'd like to see the application, I'd like to see the permit, I don't wanna see a letter that says, "We got a permit," I'd like to see the details that went into it.
Oh, they're public documents. We'll take that under consideration.
I appreciate it.
It's gonna be documents like this, it's gonna be, it's gonna be charts and charts and charts. I've read hundreds of them and I still don't understand them, but if you wanna read them, we'll make them available.
Well, you know, I'm...
Thank you.
I'm a relatively bright guy.
That's what I think the NIPs application is, they have the entire application for you.
What is that?
Alright, so look.
Excuse me, what did you just say?
This is the entire NIPs application.
What application?
Alright. I think at the end of the day, you have a sense of where my discomfort is. And if you guys choose to respond to that, you'll help me feel more comfortable.
Can I just have, can I just understand, what application did Ms. Wagner just hold up? Is that the Act Two application?
It is not. I was asked to, uh, you can take the whole thing, you can have it.
I don't know, what is it?
It's the NPDES application.
Alright, we have that. And you got that off what, the, the website?
Yeah. It's not your application, this is the blank application.
So, alright, I think, I've got nothing else, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Edgerton, I, if you would be kind enough afterward to give me your email address, we'll find the Lang and materials and we'll send it to you.
I think if, I think if you just sent it to the staff...
Forward to staff.
We'll, we'll get it that way.
It's very interesting that you say that, because it...
Thank, thank, thank you.
Okay.
Let me just share, share them there, thanks. Mr. Graziano?
Thank you. You know, there's been a lot of talk about permits, state and federal permits, DEP, and those all address, you know, compliance, but they don't determine whether this application meets Eastern, Eastern standards for suitability, safety, and impact on our community. That's why we have these seven special exemption criteria here, and it seems like you're trying to bypass that altogether with what you're saying about that part right there. But anyway, um, I have a major concern for flooding as well. You know, Eastern's experienced multiple major floods in recent decades. What assurance can you give us that diverting a tributary and constructing basins in a floodplain will not worsen future flood events for the community or downstream and downtown Eastern?
So if I can, let me get back to my plans here. So the, the floodplain that was there... The floodplain that existed on the, on the site before, we're essentially just, just moving it. So the basin discussion, the basin is in where the old floodplain is. Where we have the, the basin proposed, it is not within any floodplain in our post-construction conditions. So once the tributary is moved, the basin is out of the floodplain.
Can you show on that map exactly where, where you're talking about right there, what in the floodplain itself?
The, the floodplain, the proposed floodplain for the tributary is the red.
Right.
Let's try to zoom in here, and the, the basins are outside of, of that... That floodplain.
So what about right there?
That's showing the existing floodplain underneath it, so where the existing tributary is, we're gonna be moving that, so that floodplain goes away.
Okay. So on the floodplain we're looking at right now, there won't be any basins whatsoever?
I wanna make sure I'm understanding correct. On what you're looking at there, it does show the, the basin, that the existing floodplain, but when that basin is built, that floodplain will be moved.
The, you're, you're saying the floodplain itself will be moved?
Correct. I can, maybe I can cycle through these two.
We are talking about Hundred Year Flood, right?
Yes, the Hundred Year Floodplain. So when, if I go back between these two, you can see how it arches, the existing floodplain sits further within the site. Where, where the proposed basin will be, but once we relocate the tributary, the basin is no longer in the floodplain.
So what we're looking at right now is not the current floodplain, it'll be the floodplain afterwards, is that what you're saying?
The red, yes. And as far as the construction sequence goes, one of the first steps on this is to relocate the tributary, so it's away from all the construction activity for the remainder of the project site.
So when that, when that tributary is daylighted and opened up and moved down fairly far, can you show that again, the before and after?
Let me zoom in a little here for you. Think I have it close to scale, so before and after.
So when it's open, like, doesn't that increase the, um, the speed of the water when it travels through, isn't it gonna go through faster at that point?
No, what we did was we designed it to have a flatter slope. So we main, or we actually maintained the existing slope, so slope will help determine your velocity, the steeper you go, the faster the water goes. With it, in the proposed conditions, we could have just taken a straight line, we actually gave it the meandering, that'll actually help slow the water down and, and flatten that slope out. And with the floodplain benches in there, those, those wetlands will get overtopped in a two-year storm. So your, your hundred-year storm's gonna go way above them, but a two-year storm will spread out and that slows it down as well.
So I guess the question would be, in the event of, you know, in a hundred-year storm, a huge hurricane, how will the floodplain alter everything you're changing, prevent additional risks to surrounding residents?
The red that's shown there is the Hundred Year Floodplain.
Right.
It's actually just a little slightly larger than that. So we've actually maintained when, and what FEMA, DEP, and your floodplain ordinance all requires is we cannot raise the floodplain elevation within the confines or outside of our property. And that's all part of the hydrology or EHNA study, the hydraulic and hydrology study that was provided as part of the application reviewed by your staff. This tributary is relatively minor as far as flooding concerns go. Most of the water coming down through it is actually restricted at Hakadav, there's an existing culvert there. That actually provides more restriction.
But that's outside of...
That, that's outside of it, so that actually backs up water, I wanna say itself, you can see the floodplain in there. That actually limits how much water's going through our site and our specific floodplain.
So you're saying runoff water, rainwater, flooding, floodwaters will not increase whatsoever? will not increase whatsoever?
Correct. We, we had to make sure in our calculations and show and prove to DEP that the elevation does not increase.
That's really hard for me to believe that. I mean, it's such a huge property.
It's a huge property, but the, the existing stream in there, where it's not underground, it's actually, a lot of it's in some concrete walls. So it really restricts that stream. And once it gets above those walls, it just spreads out. We're actually giving it laid-back slopes. We provided those floodplain benches in there. So it actually has room to expand slower and not create that, that hard flush downstream.
So you can guarantee us today that no downstream resident will face increased risk as a result of this?
Yes.
Guaranteed?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I have right now.
Mr. Hallman? Mr. Shipman, anything addition?
No, no question.
We've had a lot of opportunity for us to share thoughts and ask questions. Just from, I think mine were answered, just to, you know, and were addressed. And beyond that, I think Ms. Wagner did an incredible job of pointing out some of the concerns that I think are shared here. I think you're, as you made us aware of, you know, the special exception and what it's, it's to be, we also are aware that we are here to make a recommendation. That ultimately you will be before the zoning hearing board regardless of what the planning commission decides. But I hope that tonight is instructive in a sense of while you may have things that satisfy you in terms of what you're feeling needs to be done, you heard from some folks here who wanna dig a little bit deeper. And while it may not be required to provide some of those background pieces that DEP's already looked at, our staff's already looked at, others have already looked at, you may wanna think about providing those because I think they do add a sense of comfort, let's say. And, and, and so I think that's something to consider. Also something to consider are the the items that Ms. Wagner brought up with regard to Chapter 298, Article Six of the Flood Hazard District Use and the Special Exception Application Requirements. All the things she mentioned are here. And just because they were presented as part of the land development plan, again, that's separate from what we're doing tonight. So there, there may need to be some provision of those things that may have been skipped over if in fact you have those items. I also think it was presented as a good idea to consider that whatever materials are gonna be presented to the zoning hearing board, they be presented well enough in advance that folks can take a look at them and maybe can target some of the questions specifically to those. So this is just some observations I have. I don't have a particular question. I think you shared what you needed to share with us tonight, and certainly the, um, the permits, you know, are here. But it's clear that comfort of the people who are trying to make decisions on these things could use a little bit of additional information. So I just put that out as a suggestion. Again, I don't have a question. I think if we're done with that, we thank you for all the comments you've made tonight. And we're going to ask you to step back. We're gonna allow our, our public to have a chance to share with the commission. Thank you very much for your presentation tonight. Biology is upon us. We're gonna just take a five-minute break and then we're gonna get to the public and comments that you may have that you would like to direct to the commission. Five minutes.
Now, why are all the guys rushing? All the guys are rushing.
I know, right?
By the way. But you made the point. That's, that's the, you had, you had it up there. I just, I think, I think the crowd is... Well, I think the thing, I think the thing is, is, you know, there's sort of, should be. Hope there's trust that the agency is giving permits, that they've done all this. And you know that they don't. I know that they do. They're relying on you. I understand. But like I said, bringing back some of those key pieces, and you've heard, you gave them specifics. Bring back some of those key pieces to the zoning hearing board is actually gonna make, we're only, we're only doing a recommendation.
My thing is, is that I also, like, want, like, the stamped engineer plans with all the revision dates. Everything that they've given us doesn't have a revision date. And what that does is it complicates things because wood virgin and hard part, they do. This plan says it's a hundred square, hundred feet tall. It wasn't a hundred feet tall when the hard part, wasn't that it?
And that's, and that's really, and that's really for the city, and that's really for the city staff. To be fair to them, you know. They're not set up for projects.
No.
They're set up for six defenses. You know, it's something that's, so it's something I think to share with the city council folks about. You know, maybe there's time for you to bring this up.
I can build a 1500 square yard in New Jersey. I deal with these different...
No, I believe you do. Well, you're, you're really on top of them, sir. Thank you. You did a lot of work on our behalf.
I feel like I've done, you know, I care so much about Easton my whole life. I can't drop the ball now.
Well, no, no. Bad news, more shit. Ultimately, they'll, they'll be back in front of us for those better jobs. Well, that's usually, that's usually what we do. Yep.
I feel like some of the stuff should've been from the start, like, we know site plans, like, look, there's no, well, this one happens because you got me. Like, nobody, nobody knows, like, there's no, I have no idea who, what agency this is from. What, you know, so...
I, I think that it should go to the staff. Like, I don't think that it'd have anything to do with any of that.
My answer is, you follow, you know, the guidelines we have to follow, and then whatever, you know, conditions you want.
I mean, that's just my, you know, like I said, sometimes every woman has shadows. Well. You know, I think Kim knows where she was talking.
Do we wanna sit out? Obviously.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we do, why not? He did it. Yeah. I see. Yeah. No, I know. I mean, as far as this is concerned, I still don't think the project is a good project. As far as this is concerned. Oh, no, he knew, he knew what he was... And I told my, and I thought you were trying to make that announcement, I don't know what makes it. I had a little bit, I mean, anybody who's up and say, even anyone, and if you don't have an expertise, you really don't know what they're talking about. Now, what, what happened? You can just say it like it's true. And so it doesn't mean it is. Trump does that all the time. He just says so. It's like, you know, there's nothing, here is, they just think about sage 1500% rug. So if a hundred dollar drug, I would pay, I would, they would pay 1500 dollars.
They're gonna end up paying you for drugs.
Yeah, well, he, yeah, right. He just makes stories.
And that's my, and that's my point. I mean, everything you're talking about, that'll go back, you know. It would never, never help for me. This is what I think they say. Talking about the... I had this guy one time, never used it. Gastro guy from California. You guys, he's talking. He ever do wrong? Nope. He very nice. I just remember saying something like, "Wow." Takes some real balls to say something.
Yeah, yeah.
What are you lying?
Yeah.
And another one, this blood gas study, this guy named Amerant, he's 97, from California. And I, I wrote a book on blood gas. Like, how are sleeping, try to cross them. Question was whether it was arterial blood gas. Had to do with it. What about this number and this number? Everybody has said yes, because I think doctors are bottom. People who, well, I laughed. There's an attempt to tell us. We're all sitting here going, "Better sit out, Howard. I don't think you want this guy to say something." This guy just, he just hobbled the shit out of us. That's what I'm saying. That's why you gotta know when to say. You know? No, I don't, I don't either. Your guy's gotta get out.
My phone with me? Leave it in the bathroom?
And the potential. Regard, he's like, "I push it, don't push it." I don't know. What do I know to do that? We'll just, we'll do it in the beginning.
This stuff, I didn't, I didn't think about all the problems.
If we gotta go over everything?
I walked out, I saw the waterfall.
If we gotta go over everything?
Problem. And I didn't think they were gonna relocate. I didn't remember it.
Okay, that's fine.
I didn't remember it.
Okay. We ready, gentlemen? Get back, we, we ready over here to get back? Would you like to call the meeting back, back to order? Now we're at the, the portion, and I apologize that I failed to do this with the initial applicant to provide the, uh, uh, public with a chance to, uh, comment on that. Hope, hope nobody was disappointed, but we're not gonna avoid that part now. We're gonna allow you to have some say. I know a number of you were involved with our, um, our meeting in May, uh, where the land development plan was brought forth. And we heard, um, not only a great deal from the applicant, but we also did from the public as well. I just wanna remind everybody that we are here specifically for the special exception on the, on the floodwater management in a floodplain on the, the move of a waterway. That we are not addressing anything about the full, uh, land development plan. That will be heard, at least it's continued at this point till September 3rd. Um, and as I think you know, we also took all the commentary that we did in May. We, we will be looking to meet an executive session after this to talk about the procedure of that next meeting. So we would like to get to that tonight too, because we wanna be able to do that in advance. So, given that, same as we would always do, is we would like to keep comments brief. Uh, please try not to repeat what other people have said before. Know that you're speaking to the commission and we, we definitely wanna hear what you, you have to say. Again, if you were here in May, you know, we're good listeners. We wanna hear, and we know you have, uh, questions and concerns. And we just appreciate, uh, you're spending the time with us tonight and staying here, uh, as you have, uh, to give us a chance to hear what you have to say. So thank you for that, and I appreciate, uh, in advance your cooperation. We, we all do. So, uh, that said, the floor is available here. And, uh, we'll start with our, uh, our first speaker.
Hi. Hi, my name's Colleen O'Neil, 138 South 11th Street, Easton, Pennsylvania. Thank you again for your time this evening. I'm representing Stop the Woodav Warehouse, a regional nonpartisan grassroots community coalition. And I do have to say, it's been really, really beautiful to be part of this community and like watching it grow. And it's just been like a wonderful experience. Yeah, so, so I wasn't gonna start this way, but the disrespect shown to our planning commission and community tonight by Scannell's representation is abhorrent and should never be accepted in this room. Particularly, the hostility towards women. Which is something our coalition has had to deal with. Uh, the women in our coalition and women who are perceived to be part of our coalition has had to deal with for months. Misogyny has no place here, and I ask that if Mark Kaplan can't handle speaking respectfully to women in this room, that he be removed permanently. It speaks volumes that the developer clearly sought to conceal the plans of this proposal from the public by not sharing the presentation in a public forum until unrest from our beloved community. This is unacceptable behavior by the applicant and legal representation. The last time Scannell Properties and their associates were here in our city hall, in this chamber, with us, they spewed lies. When responding to a question about the impact their proposed 1 million square foot mega warehouse would have on the community, us, all of us, their team member and attorney at the time, Charlie Courtney, stated, and I quote...
I'd like, I'd like to interrupt there.
Yeah.
Again.
This is coming...
No, 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 I don't want it to come. I'd like it to come now. Uh, we wanna make sure that we stay focused on this to be fair, to be fair to them. We'll have, we've had time to discuss the full plan.
Okay. Well, you can watch that on Instagram or your own recordings when he lied straight to our faces. So these lies skewed data analysis and nefarious misrepresentations, like that there are no wetlands when they're clear as day on the national wetlands inventory map. Right, Dwayne?
Right, Carl.
After, um, these are all insults to our region, our city, our community, and even more to our planning commission. After years of Scannell working on this atrocious project, Mark Kaplan just stood here and stated that June 26, June 26, 2025, is when they realized there was a floodplain that needed to be recognized. The truth of the matter is that there is a special exception that they are asking for, uh, that the special exception that they're asking for will only hasten the cataclysmic demise of our region. They wanna relocate a water course within a floodplain. They wanna put a retention basin in a floodplain. They want to put part of a huge new access road in a floodplain. This doesn't even take into account the massive impervious surface created by the warehouse and the adjacent parking lots. This is ludicrous. And now I'm gonna read a short segment of the independent professional assessment letter we submitted to you from Ms. Cole of Circle Risk Consulting, directly dealing with the flooding. Quote, "According to analysis from the First Street Foundation," which everybody up here should know, I'm sure Dwayne does, "downtown Easton has an extreme risk of flooding over the next 30 years. Approximately 430 properties, 62.6% of all properties in the area, are projected to be at risk. These properties sit downstream of the proposed development. Historically, Easton has experienced at least four significant flood events in the last 25 years and a handful of devastating floods from the century before. While large flood events may appear infrequent, their impacts are generational. The damage they leave behind, financial, social, and environmental, accumulates over time. In this context, new development must proceed with the utmost caution and clear-eyed attention to long-term consequences. Portion of the property are known to fall within FEMA-designated flood zones. The current site plan includes large retention basins and the redirection of an unnamed tributary to Bushkill Creek. These design elements suggest that the site engineers recognize the flood risk to the site itself. However, we urge the review board and developers to extend this risk assessment beyond the parcel lines to the surrounding community that will bear the burden if the flood resilience worsens. This is not just a technical concern, it is an economic and moral one. Future insurance affordability, the value of nearby properties, and the city's broader resilience to climate impacts all hinge on decisions made today. It is imperative to ask, will these water diversion plans strengthen Easton's flood resilience? Or are we setting up the community for disaster the next time a stalled hurricane remnant drenches this region instead of Asheville, North Carolina?" End quote. Lies and empty promises are what Scannell and associates have brought and will continue to bring to us. You are planners. The evidence is in plain sight. We live here. You live here. Our community members are not expendable. But I think we know who and what is. Look at the saldo, 298, 12I, 13, 20, et cetera. This is an easy choice for all of you. Special exceptions should not be handed out to developers just because they are trying to threaten and bully our region into submission. I'm not even gonna ask, I'm just gonna be the voice of reason here and tell you to not give a positive recommendation to this nauseating and outrageous request. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Brett Weber. I'm resident at 120 Morrison Avenue in the city. I'm an architect here in the city as well. First, I just wanna say that I'm invigorated by the city planning commissions stepping up to the plate and doing the hard work for citizen taxpayers by asking tough questions and challenging applicants. I often find myself in the case of teams like this presenting before planning commissions throughout Bucks County, Philadelphia, elsewhere. And it pays to come prepared and to anticipate the tough questions. the tough questions. And the tone and tenor of the developers' representatives and presentation tonight doesn't really suggest that there's a level of respect for the community, or for your time, or for any of our time, and this process. So, I think the, any developer seeking to do a project of this scale should be deferential, should be respectful, should be open to listening to the concerns of citizens, and be mindful that the state approvals and other approvals are subject to the final review of the planning commission and the ordinance that you have to guide you. There are a couple of points of order that I just want to share as suggestions and recommendations. I was a bit shocked that the agenda for this evening's meeting, the item seven, did not identify the address, notwithstanding the crowd that's here that dutifully showed up anticipating there would be discussion. There was less clarity, and so for a lot of wealthier zip codes that I've operated in, this agenda item would have been chucked because there wouldn't have been proper public notice of the specific address in consideration for the special exception. Having said that, I encourage you to insist upon advanced posting of proposed documents. It benefits you, it benefits the developer, to have everybody have reasonable time for review. It really should be a requirement of the planning commission with a timeline deadline, or it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be taken up under consideration. That's just my recommendation, and it's in fact enforced aggressively in many other municipalities. I would encourage that the city take the responsibility of sharing on its website so that these documents are something for the public and professionals to assess and have meaningful and instructive comment on. One of the things that, you know, we've said before and that you acknowledge is that the planning commission has a responsibility to review the negative impact of proposed developments and improvements, and understanding that this is a special exception review, we need to understand that it's not on a one acre site by itself. So, notwithstanding the reminder that we're not undertaking land development review, you can't really extract these improvements from the entirety of the land development. And there was sufficient confusion about property parcels, et cetera, et cetera. You can't separate the two things. This is, this is, these improvements are specifically required to implement this development. So, that needs to be part of the understanding. There were a couple of terms that were thrown out here tonight that I, that I'm just a little concerned about, just misrepresenting what is actually designed and implemented. So, daylighting, as a design professional, and I work a lot with DCNR on this sort of stuff, daylighting, the term for uncovering and restoring a previously barrier culverted waterway is daylighting. It involves bringing a stream or river back to its natural, open state, often by removing or modifying existing infrastructure like pipes, culverts, concrete channels, according to stream restoration experts and stream restoration organizations, and in fact, many municipalities that review this. This is not daylighting to return it to its natural habitat. This is a relocation of a waterway. So, yes, the water that is otherwise covered is daylight, daylit, but it has been completely relocated. To that point, one of the questions that I didn't hear answered is, is there a new FEMA map of revision prior to this work moving forward? Typically, that's a requirement that FEMA acknowledges, that the engineers have assessed that, okay, the FEMA map is wrong. You go through that process. There's a process on FEMA's website. How do you do that? That's typically a requirement to be recorded first, acknowledged, so that the basis of design can proceed from that, and there may be a revision that happens after an approved relocation of a waterway. Something to digest. The planning commission, I think, should also consider for the public's benefit whether the minimum standards for the floodplain design are sufficient, given the special nature of this site in the Bushkill Valley and, and the propensity for excess flooding. Regulations are what they are, but there is, there is a conversation to have with the developer about, are you designing just to minimum standards, or can you talk to us about what happens when we have a 200 or a 300, 500-year flood? These are issues that should be considered because we are exacerbating a condition. Notwithstanding, a consultant stated that no additional risk would be delivered to any residents downstream. I encourage the planning commission to ask the developer for exacting details on that. And the, the last point I would offer is just that the, this 298, 13 special exception uses, I think others may address this, is that a lot was talked about with DEP. If you go to Article 2, it's essentially saying that, you know, you've got to get all these other approvals from PDEP, the Public Utility Commission, Army Corps of Engineers. Notifications of such actions shall be provided to all affected adjoining municipalities, FEMA and the PID, CED. I'm stating this also for the benefit of the public here. "The approval of a permit by any of the preceding state or federal agencies for one of the uses allowed in the flood hazard district shall in no way affect or conflict with the hazard requirements imposed upon the use under the regulations of the flood hazard district." So essentially, so that the public understands that you're in charge of enforcing the law of this ordinance, notwithstanding any of those prior approvals. And so I encourage you to do so and look at this. We obviously oppose this project, but on the, specifically for this special exception, because it is the dilemma of unintended consequences, but we're all aware of what the consequences will be if the special exception is granted, the project moves forward. So, with that, I thank you. Thank you for your time.
Hello, nice to see everyone again. I have no presentation prepared. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but I just wanted to talk about something. Let me first introduce myself. My name is Cody Harding. My address is 410 North 10th Street in Easton. I wanted to first thank everyone. I think we're all grateful for the scrutiny and the seriousness with which you've taken this. It makes our job easier. I also wanted to comment that the NPDES documents and some of the plans which were presented tonight, which some of you have said you haven't seen, I have, and I'm happy to distribute as someone who received a right-to-know request response from NPDES. So, some of those documents, you know, I'm happy to share if anybody would like to see them. I know the developer's representative was struggling to find them. I think what's important is not what the developer has said, but what they didn't say. I think to reiterate what Brett just cited in our code, the developer was citing from a case, I had to look it up while they were talking, but the case is 2014 case, Williams Holding Group LLC versus West Hannover Township. This is a Commonwealth Court case. And I know the developer wants to say, we got approvals from DEP, don't worry about it. But, the, the case says, and this is the Commonwealth Court, quote, "We cannot definitively agree with the developer's contention that compliance with DEP standard for mitigating or minimizing the effects of its construction process constitutes absolute compliance with the ordinance provision calling for construction that is minimally invasive." And minimally invasive was a quote from the West Hannover Township. So, even the case that they want to rely on, yes, it turned out that the case, you know, was remanded to the trial court for other reasons, but DEP approval is not sufficient. And the reason I know Mr. Shipman was talking about this unnamed tributary daylighting, and why haven't we heard of this before? It has been in the plan from the start, but the developer deliberately never identified that this was a floodplain. And the floodplain is not just along the Bushkill, it stretches all the way over towards Lower Hackett Park. And so the reason this now feels so important is because they, after 11 months, failed to tell us that it was a floodplain. And I'd just like to point out one other thing. I don't know, is it possible to get the map that they were presenting up there again? I don't know if that was from them or from us.
It was from them.
Okay, so, they showed you the topographical math with retention ponds and the stormwater. If you look at it closely, they had removed all of the topographical lines on there, and it wasn't a map that didn't have topographical lines. Everything but their site had topographical lines, and the reason they don't want you to see this, and I'd be happy to share it because I was shocked, is that the steep cascading slopes down into this relocated waterway are a problem, and they go hand in hand. And so I just want you to scrutinize. If you get a chance, I'll be happy to share those maps that show not only the flood zone, but also show their intended plateauing. And one other thing I wanted to comment about was the special warranty deed, which is public record, this 2023 restrictive covenant deed. Now, the prior, the property was previously owned by Abacus Industrial Holding. The primary partner of that is someone who's a real estate investor in Arizona. They sold in 2021 the property after scrapping lots of the parts and, and, you know, getting some money out of it and partially remediating it. They sold it to, for $100,000, to another entity that they own, the Abruzzi Trust. So it wasn't really an arms-length transaction. This one person was moving it from one entity to another entity. Two years after they'd made that transfer and began to understand the reality of this project, they executed a special warranty deed, which is an agreement between two private parties. We don't have any means of enforcing that as the public. But the reason they did that was to insulate their other LLC from any harm that would come as a result of this development. And it talks about not only the failure to remove, I think their engineer was saying that they can't remove any dirt from it. It also talks about you can't put any utilities underground. Anything has to be sort of waterproof. There's about six or seven, and I also have a copy of that, and I'm happy to share it. I don't have anything else to say. I'm happy to answer questions. I feel like I know as much about this project, certainly more than Mark Kaplan and as much as anybody in this room. So I just want to thank you all for your consideration and really implore you to not recommend that they are granted this special exception. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jennifer Rush. I live in Cedar Park Boulevard. And I just want to start out by saying, as a citizen of the city of Easton and as a citizen of the Commonwealth, I am shocked and appalled that anyone would say that they have the, the right, the privilege to reroute a tributary that is part of the Delaware Watershed and ultimately a part of our drinking water. The fact that they would come in here with the expectation that they were already entitled to do that, and that the Commonwealth somehow empowered them to reroute a water source, a tributary to our city's water, that makes me so concerned for what their intentions are, what their intentions are in Easton, and how little they really care about the public welfare and public well-being. With that said, I have preferred a few other words. I would like to say that Skennell Properties claims no notable damage will be done to the integrity of the wetland or the floodplain, yet they seek a permit allowing otherwise illegal or conflicting action due to its associated risk. Skennell Properties has misled this planning commission by claiming there are no significant environmental impacts from warehouses. Their actions contradict their words. The necessity for them to request a special exception indicates that they will cause harm, or at the very least, will not meet the typical legal standards expected for floodplain management. This request serves as an acknowledgement of their wrongdoing. You might remember that they had a map up a little earlier that had a red line indicating where they intend to relocate this tributary. It sounds great to say, we're gonna bring it up to the surface. It sounds great to say, we're gonna add wetland space around it, but what that sounds like to me is that they already know that this project is going to destroy habitat, it is going to destroy wetland, and they are trying to diffuse the situation by creating something off to the side that maybe they can say takes the place of whatever they've ruined. Skennell's developers will be leaving this state the second they get their vote, while we have to bear the consequences of their lies and irresponsibility. This special exception request says what they will not. They will incur harm otherwise not allowed under current zoning, and we sincerely ask you not to allow them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Krista Kelleher. I'm a hydrologist, so I study rivers, lakes, water quality, all that good stuff that you all are trying to evaluate, right? Are we gonna negatively impact that? So I have two brief comments. I, the first thing, so trying to evaluate whether the planned daylighting and relocation of the waterway will lead to adverse effects. The thing that I want to raise is the area between that tributary.
Step back. Yep.
The area between that tributary and the Delaware River is a really complex area in terms of flooding. So when we deal with flooding on Bushkill Creek, right, we have flooding that's coming down, but we also get backwater effects from the Delaware. So when we have that tributary coming in, right, that's going to potentially cause issues for that area between the tributary. I get too excited.
Just, just step back a little bit. We can hear you.
Sounds good. So between the tributary and the Delaware River, I don't know if that's something that is evaluated as part of their H&amp;H analysis, but it would be something that's good to ask about. Because what is between that tributary and the Delaware River is all of us, I think. The other thing that I want to raise is the addition of steep slopes in that area and some of the comments from Mr. Etterson, which I think we're right on point, right? When we add steep slopes, and we add a million square feet of impervious surface plus parking lots, we are gonna get runoff, and we can put those socks in that they were talking about. Four weeks ago, we had an inch and a half storm, right? I'm a hydrologist. I really like watching flooding. We don't want it to happen, but I want to know where it's happening. There are several places along Bushkill Drive where we have ongoing construction, and they have those socks in place. We have sediment basically spilling onto Bushkill Drive and Bushkill Road in a lot of those areas, even from a very small storm, and that's because a lot of those rainstorms are becoming more intense. And so, when we're thinking about sediment and we're thinking about treating those different things, right, these, these are very important concerns. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Hi, I'm Charles Pax. I live up on Wolf Avenue, and I don't know, I love Easton, and I've only been here for maybe six years or so, but I've been in the area for about 12, and I've seen the factory be disassembled and taken down and smoothed out and everything they've done. And during that time, I've driven past it between my house and my parents' house, and I see it multiple times a week, and during this time, I've had this vision that I've wanted to implement. I like, I'd love to buy that property and turn it into a botanical garden with a heavy emphasis on native plants. Like, that, that's my dream. And I'm out here today because there's, you know, something frustrating that. So, I would just like to offer the town and to, to the extent, I don't like that this is even legal, that I'd like to provide funds available to answer all of the questions that you have, be it legal research, or doing core samples, or, you know, whatever it may be, hydrology, doesn't matter. And in addition to that, any legal defense that may be necessary and probably will be necessary at some point for the town and potentially you individually, they, there was a comment made early that like, oh, you're required to do this, so maybe they'll come at you individually with, you know, some dereliction of duty if you vote no. So, anyway, I don't know, would it be a good number, maybe a couple, a couple hundred thousand dollars or something?
If, if, if I may, because I don't think it's really appropriate, especially as offering this to the commission members.
Well, yeah.
I, I, and it is not in direct relation to the special exception issue, but if you really believe that, I suggest you talk to this group, because this group still doesn't have legal counsel of record.
Sure.
And, 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 and when you go to the zoning hearing board, and it's a much more formal process of evidentiary proceedings, you're gonna need to present evidence of, not just comments, and, and legal counsel's the way to do that. I'm just saying, since you're offering money, but also, but I'm, I'm stop, I, for you, but I'm stopping it because it's totally inappropriate. We don't want your money. This volunteer board here will do the best based on what they have to under the, under the law. Thank you.
Oh, absolutely, yes, and it'd be something where you can ask a question, I'll go pay someone else to answer a question, or whatever. My good friend here is gonna help me out. Thank you.
All right, very good. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, well, this is a last, last comment here.
Jim Bloom, 1044 Ferry Street, Easton, PA, previous planning commission member, and I appreciate all of your efforts, as I know what, what it takes to review and go through all of this approval process. This is brief. It was something I just looked up on the Lehigh Valley Live, published on June 13, 2023, where warehousing and other developments posed threat to the Lehigh River, not seen since. River not seen since the industrial era. Now, they're talking specifically about the Lehigh, but in further down, they talk about more than one-third of the creeks and streams and rivers so, are so polluted in Pennsylvania they are designated impaired according to the Department of Environmental Protection 2022 Integrated Water Quality Report. We do not want this to be one of those streams. Thank you.
Thank you. And we appreciate everyone's attention and, uh, questions, comments, and your continued diligence, uh, in, in, uh, coming to these meetings and informing us. At this point, um, we have a, a staff recommendation that the planning commission make a recommendation to zoning hearing board for granting the special exception in this case. Do I have, uh, a motion on that or any other?
I'd make a motion to deny.
Uh, louder into there.
I would make a motion to deny the special exception.
I'll second that.
Technically, uh, the recommend, if you're making the recommendation would be, I'm sorry, if you're making a motion, it to be to recommend to the zoning hearing board the denial, and if you have any reasons to do it, I still suggest it's more meaningful uh, when the, when the, um, zoning hearing board understands why you're doing it, remembering the, um, the comments of, uh, Mr. Kaplan, which was accurate, that a special exception is technically not something that's a variance, it means they have a right to do it unless you have evidence to the contrary, and I know you, you've done a lot of research, so it's up to you how you want to present it, but the motion would be to recommend to the planning commission denial.
To me, all of the applications and checklist, uh, with stamped plans.
Into the microphone, just to make sure they hear you.
The, the required checklist with stamped plans.
So, so, so that, if I may, you're, you're moving to recommend to the, to the, um, zoning hearing board the denial of the special exception because of the failure to meet all the application requirements under section 298-14. Uh, I'll get it for you. 298 dash 14, um, and stamp, did you say stamped plans?
Yep, stamped engineered plans. There's a whole list of like all the engineers required, that they're supposed to, I don't have the.
So, so, so is that, is that, is that a, a more complete motion?
Um, yeah, but others may have things to add.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, uh, we have a second for Mr. Graziano. Uh, Mr. Graziano, anything you want to add there?
Yeah, I'd add some of the special exemption criteria. Um, right up the top of my head, I'd say number seven, the proposed use is suitable for the site. Um, I would say a truck circulation road, stormwater basins and, and moving a, the stream is not suitable for a FEMA mapped floodplain, which is meant to remain open and undeveloped. And, um, Ms., Mr. Shear, you're gonna want these written?
I think, uh, Mr., our secretary is taking the notes and will present it in a, appropriate form to present to the zoning hearing board.
Yes, it'll be part of the resolution. Um, it's recorded, so I'll have it word for word.
And then, and then it'll be, uh, put into the minutes for the next meeting.
That's absolutely right.
Yeah, thank you.
So we have a first and a second. Do we have any further discussion, um, which might include if anybody else has reasons that they'd like to articulate that would be good to do that?
I would like to offer a friendly amendment detailing based upon 298-14, section A, part four, um, that, um, the, um, items presented are not allegedly drawn or of suitable scale to be able to sufficiently understand or detail the engineering drawings, um, and that there was a lack of completeness concerning the flood depths, pressures, velocities, and impact and uplift, uh, forces and factors associated with the base flood. I'm gonna take it easy after that. And, um, again, in section A, item 13, that the evacuation plan fully explains the manner in which the site will be safely evacuated during the course of a flood, of a basin flood. One of the main elements of their relocation is the development of a bridge. Um, I've always had concern, well, no, I'm gonna stop there. Development of a bridge which could be impacted by a basin flood.
Um, should have asked this before, Ms. Wagner, since you made the motion, you accept, uh, Mr. Graziano's, uh, additional reasons for denial, suitability of site, moving waterway, moving a waterway in F E P A?
Yeah, I think like this entire checklist here covers all of that.
Okay, and so Mr. Etchison, having cited a specific, you're fine with that as well? What he just cited, you're also fine with that?
Just one of those?
No, 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 just you said all, but he wanted to emphasize one in particular.
Perfect.
Okay. Anything, anybody else would like to add? Um, I, I, I would go back to the special exception criteria, uh, as, as Mr. Graziano did, that proposed improvements, that they're suitable for the site. Um, I, I think the lack of providing other things beyond the permit, um, is evidence to me that we don't know whether they're suitable for the site. Um, number six is the proposed improvements will not create a hazard to public health and safety, and I think some of the things that have just been added, uh, get to that as well. And, and again, it's why I encourage the applicant to think about some of these other things that they could be presenting rather than resting just on, on, uh, the permits. And so, um, I think there's a reason there that we do not really know, and I, again, I want to thank, um, Ms. Wagner publicly for all the information that she brought forward because I think that was very helpful, and thanks to those of you who've commented as well, but, uh, I would cite those things, uh, for my concerns. Anything else? All right, hearing none. Um, we'll take a roll call vote on a recommendation, um, to deny, uh, a recommendation to the zoning hearing board, if that's how I heard you, Mr. Shear.
Yeah, um, a, 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 a motion to recommend the, the denial by the zoning hearing board.
The denial, right, to recommend the denial. Okay. All right, um, that said, that is the, uh, the motion on the floor. Uh, Ms. Wagner, voting to recommend the denial.
Yes.
Yes? Mr. Graziano?
Yes.
Mr. Etchison?
Yes.
Mr. Shipman?
Yes.
Mr. Heilmann?
Yes.
I will vote yes as well. So that is recommending the denial. As, um, a- as we said, um, with regarding, regardless of the recommendation or not, it does go to the zoning hearing board, that is where the special exception will be decided. So again, we thank you for your patience and your determination to be out and a, a part of the community in a really important way. Uh, I can tell you, as commissioners, we appreciate it. So thank you very much. Is there anything else for the good of the order? Uh, we are, uh, going to move to executive session to discuss, uh, procedures, particularly for the next meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we are adjourned. We're going in here now?
Lady, we order a pizza.
I know. I'm thirsty.
Oh, yeah, well, they go to the second session so I can talk, you know, that's why. It's always get to them.
They're not gonna have anything that they need by then. Like, they don't, they're not gonna have everything that they need by then. They're not gonna have everything they need by then. You know, like, I don't understand why they're just trying to jam it down our throats, there's a lot of stuff.
Okay.
Thank you. Well, I think, uh...
I, um...
Thank you.
I'll tell you, it's getting tougher, I have to...
What?
I won't, I won't, I won't, well, I won't play, I won't play two days in a row. Like, tomorrow.
Oh, my gosh.
Because you know what it is? I can feel like I could play, but I know if I repeat it, it's me a second. It joins it really hard.
It was a lot of research, thank you.
It's blocking, look at these figures. And, 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 and if I'm playing defense and I want to hand that, well, it's like, it's the worst thing to do. But otherwise, otherwise, no, I, I, I'm glad to play. No, 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 you, you, you know, I'm all... You know what, Tony, you really did, as far as dribbling, as far as dribbling, I, I always knew.
I do this in private, so I don't need time. Yeah, I love a lot of the construction documents, so... Thank you.
They may have left, pal.
As you're reading on. Yeah, that was cool. Busy, yeah. Which is good. Hey, Brad, I just wanted to say, I'm really glad, I appreciate the words you said, and you know, just, I mean, I'm just really, I felt it was great hearing some of your...
Trying to be more respectful, but like, get to the ship. I have a question for you, because it's a...
Yep, yep. No, I'm on, I used to live up on, uh, on, uh, Sonny, just off of, uh, Pennsylvania. I live on Patel.
You too, thanks.
Yeah, I'm coming, I'm coming.
There's, there's a cord, I don't know if it's cord, it was a different, off the top of that, it was like...
I was just...
We asked him like, we thought you were like, it's gonna come from this area, so the bottom of the river, it's like, like, uh, literally, they're gonna run on channels, they're gonna leak, and then they're gonna leak tremendously, it's like, it's...
I was like, nobody knows, nobody's... I don't know if they've done study or not.
Well, I think, I think we have to, and I think that's what they're really, they're really, and we want to, and we need to, like, I'm thinking that, we need to, like, we need to...
Yes. Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
And we don't have...
Okay.
That's their problem. Yeah, I'm turning it. I'm supposed to read the frickin' rules. Made a lot of money to do that.
No way. There is not. With Steve Spokes and what? A joint. A joint permits the hardest things to get.
Everybody got everything?
Yeah.
I did need to, I mean. Well, you did, you had to. I, you guys did a good job.
You know, I think people start saying, well, when they see me first, I think it bugs me because I don't think, I really don't think bugs me. It's just me. Folks who do that, I think.